Evening, tonight, 7 o'clock, and I'm opening Tuesday, February 27th, Select Board Meeting. On our agenda to start is Community Input. At 7:05, we'll have appointments and resignations. At 7:15, we have Continued Dog Hearing. We have COHS's ARPA request for funding. 7:35, we have Fiscal 25 Budget and Town Meeting Information Center, sorry, Sessions. At 8:45 Cemetery Task Force and Safety Committee.
Aye.
At 9:05 Select Board and Town Administrator Goal Review. At 9:15 Policy Approvals. At 9:45 Town Administrator Report. At 10 minutes and Warrants. 10:05 Liaison Reports. And at 10:10, again, Community Input, and then adjournment. Welcome. We're going to start with Appointments and Resignations. Let me get to my... Yes?
I move to appoint Anthony Artasini to the Position of Heavy Equipment Operator for the Department of Public Works, pending successful salary negotiations and required hiring administration, which I assume is all done because it's with anticipated start date of February 27th, 2024.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Ryan, you have any notes for us?
Just that Tony comes with a tremendous amount of experience, excavation and landscaping experience, and also has previously driven large trucks and has a hoisting license. So the only thing he's missing is a CDL license, which we're working on working on getting, and he will fulfill all the requirements for Heavy Equipment Operator, which we desperately need. So not only are we filling an important position, but we're filling it with a good employee.
That's best of all. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? That was unanimous. Officer John Ryan's Badge Pinning Ceremony. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you very much for having us. Start off quickly. Officer Jonathan Ryan began his law enforcement career with the town of Drakett in July of 2020. In Drakett, Officer Ryan was assigned to patrol for four years. During those years, Officer Ryan performed above his peers, eventually becoming a member of the NEMLEX SWAT team, where he received specialized unit training for many tactical situations. Officer Ryan is a Certified MPTC Instructor and Certified in Crisis Intervention Training, a goal we are pursuing here for all officers in Carlisle. Before Officer Ryan became a police officer, he worked for Lowell General Hospital as a security officer. Additionally, Officer Ryan has a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from UMass. It should be known that Officer Ryan was a Division One Wrestler, and he was previously selected as Team Captain. And I look forward to his experience, training, and motivation that he'll bring to the Carlisle Police Department. Officer Ryan will be penned by his father, Artie Ryan, former Deputy Superintendent at Lowell Police Department.
Welcome. Badge pin off.
Again, from our perspective.
Somebody else here too, I take it.
Yeah, she knows. She's commenting on...
Last wee pin.
This whole procedure.
Likes these ceremonies.
Yes, she does, because...
Congratulations.
Welcome. I skipped right by Community Input, and I apologize for that. So we'll circle back to that. Is there anybody either in the room or online who wanted to offer Community Input?
Hold on, Madam Chair, letting some people in.
Oh.
Use a hand up, Andy.
Yes, I see that. I'm letting people come in before we go to the Community Input.
Oh, I see, yeah, you're right. Bunch of people coming online.
All right, I'm going to recognize Andy for Community Input.
Hello, can you hear me? Great, thank you. Did we have a tune to sing tonight? I had a little speech here I wanted to read. We are...
Let us know your address.
Oh, sorry. 14 State Street.
14 what street?
State Street.
Are you a Carlisle resident?
Oh, no, sorry.
Ah, okay. So, um, could you tell us where you're from?
Oh, sorry. Concord, New Hampshire.
Concord, New Hampshire, okay.
Yep. All right, I have a little speech here I wanted to read. We're tired of being ruled by those that hate our very system. We can't go exist any longer. We must separate and peacefully, um, separate.
I just want to warn you, we do have a one-minute policy.
Oh, okay. I'll cut to the chase. George Patton was quoted as saying, "Gentlemen, I have come this morning to the unspeakable conclusion that we have fought on the wrong side. The entire world we step off of is fact, and sense, and conscience, and not good or bad. I fear that perhaps in fifty years America will pay a dear price for becoming lands of corruption and the generous moral. We may have lost that battle, but we will win this time, and we will set our people free from the dynasties occupation. They should be illegal to the DDL and others collabing to holocaust. But since we've been past, Jack Chambers of the D-Large and the Feds, there were no G-Team leaders. There was no such people in the community. Tim was written all of the propaganda comes from Tim's holy truth. And Frank Skyler is written about point ten, the truth, which was after the war. The famous book, Black Knights by Ellis Flyer, that over this total fabrication, he finds babies pretty weak like children, but these were burnt alive and other acronyms around the country. Historians have proven these planes are false. This man, D, did not die in the Holocaust, all of it. Right on D was never D. If the events were true, then this piece has lost its shocking plot. Truth can be indus here if only someone something to hide in silence is the truth. The real genocide was perpetrated by these Jews and U-Plains in 1920, 1930, 1940. Lots of Jews stopped 16.00 to 17.00. To learn more about the truth, go to dclaw.com/watchthefightwiththeconfessors. They also have the murder story Never Tell, who wrote the last article.
Thank you. Thank you. Eva Warful, oh, you were a town resident? Yes. We have a one-minute policy. Could you please identify yourself and where you're from?
Yeah, I'm Eva Warful. I live here in Carlisle. I don't know if you guys are requiring addresses, but I would prefer to, um, keep hanging out with the nature of my public company. We do need a screen.
Did you wish to be recognized, Eva? We're going to move along. We have to wait till 7:15 for the dog hearing, so... Okay. No other hand.
I, I, this is Cynthia Soren. I can't find my hands, Ben, because the screen is screwed. Could I make a quick comment? Uh, 433 Rutland Street.
Go ahead, Cynthia.
Could you please take down Andy O'Green's screen? Because it has a political statement. Thank you.
Manage that from here?
I did.
Can we do that? I think it's... Well, it's hard, unfortunately, if people come on and just worried that they might think this is a statement from us.
You're a way to technically remove them. I go, take your hand off. Hey, they can't even... Adam, cool. Bring it. Walk in here wearing it. I don't think we have... You guys do too. Five years, bring it, bring it. We have to just form. If they come in flashing, we just have to... We have a policy against offensive statements. Bring a policy. It is... Excuse me, excuse me. I find taking the Lord's name in vain highly offensive. Still there. Hate is unpunished, not in a all speech.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't, um...
How dare you take Jesus Christ's name in...
I did not recognize you. We are no...
I don't care. I don't like them taking Jesus' name in vain. Still there. How do you like that?
Thank you. We're going to move...
There is no such thing as hate speech. You not liking it doesn't make it hate speech.
I didn't recognize you either. There is such a thing, though, as the forum and our policies here in this meeting. And you may not speak unless you are recognized by...
How are you going to talk to them about this forum when you just said God's name in vain?
I beg your pardon. I did not say God's name in vain.
The guy on the left did.
We are going on to our next, uh, agenda item, which is 7:15 Continued Dog.
You're not going to address the guy sitting next to you that just did? I'm not even religious, and you're being a hypocrite. You're just fucking all religious. Why would you silence us? What's... You can't have an effective meeting allowing women to lead anything. Why? So many boomers and women there. It doesn't make any sense. They'd probably just rather have a bunch of illegal immigrants shit anyway. It's not the truth. It's like, you got so many illegal immigrants, plus their fucking goddamn state. Here. You're going to tell me to shut up now?
Make the guy on the left in the hall of God take the Lord's name in vain.
Press it and tell me to shut up.
Yeah, disrupted by the boomers left that swore and took God's name in vain. That's who started this. I'm on it, babe.
You guys are so fucking boomer tech, you can't even figure out how to mute people or pick them from your meeting.
So, so I would say, please, please don't mute them. Uh, they can either, they can either respect the meeting rules or we will have to remove them from the room. You're going to remove the guy from the room that swore and took God's name in vain?
Why don't you remove all the Jews and illegal immigrants from, from... While we are removing, have you tried getting rid of the...
He just left.
We removed them.
The viewpoint is that, you know, people can say what they want, but they can't say it out of turn or without being recognized.
That's right. Yeah.
So that's when I believe, my understanding of OML is that is when you are able to remove them from the room. And in this case, it means you, you take them off of the Zoom call.
Okay. It is 7:15. We do have a dog hearing, and we're going to start with that now.
Okay.
Let me get, I have to get my green. And there have been no complaints. And I would entertain a motion to close. Well, first, I need a motion to open the continuing move and then a motion to close it.
All right, I move that we open the Continued Nuisance Dog Order Violation Hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 157, and Section 14.6.5.1 of the General Bylaws.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, well, I'll just repeat the statement that we have not had any more complaints. And we did say that if we didn't have any more complaints, that we would close this hearing tonight, so.
And that's great news. It's seemed to have been resolved on this one. So I moved, all right. And therefore, I would move to close the Nuisance Dog Order Violation Hearing pursuant to MGL Chapter 140. Is it Section et? No, it's S stand for 157. And Section 14.6.5.1 of the General Bylaws.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Okay.
I'm glad that that ended.
Phew, yes. That, that, that whole situation with the dog ended well.
Yes, me too. Me too, it's always good when it works out.
We weren't quite sure what the "that" referred to, so that's why...
The topic.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we have an ARPA request. Do you want to talk about it, Ryan, or you want me to talk about it?
Joan's on the...
Was Joan on?
She was.
It's Carol.
I was sorry.
Carol.
Yes.
That's her. Mary Carol. Got a little frazzled, I don't know why.
Carol.
Yeah. I didn't know, you know, I had sent out the slides with the presentation and some information, and I didn't know, should I just review that again? I didn't know. I don't want to be redundant in any way, but...
Well, you wouldn't, the thing is that this is a public meeting, and we like to have those presentations made so that everybody sees what we're deciding about.
Okay. Okay, then I can do the, I have that PowerPoint. Just, oh, but I have to be able to share it? Is that...
Do you have it? Ryan, it's in the pocket.
Wait a minute, let me just...
I can share it, or I can let you share it.
What's that?
Ryan can do it if you don't have it handy.
I do, I have it right here.
Okay.
You can share now.
Okay. It is this one here. Okay. So... Just a brief history of the rental assistance for those who aren't familiar with it. The COA just started this in 2022 using ARPA funds. And we had 10 people that, no, originally it was 11, then it went down to 10. People who were receiving assistance of up to $400. The goal was to get them as close as possible to paying only 30% of their income towards their rent. Some people, there's different scenarios. Some people met that, some people earned too much in order to get that. But basically, people would get up to $400. So we have been spending in the last year about $3,000 a month. And all the recipients were from Benfield, except for starting this year. We have one person who is living in an apartment, a separate apartment, a private apartment. But that gives you just base, the sort of the background. The reason we started, of course, it was during COVID. There were a lot of rental assistance programs started. There are people who are in Benfield, which is affordable housing as opposed to subsidized. So when it's subsidized, usually you're paying 1/3 of your income, and your rent won't go up beyond 1/3 of your income. But with affordable housing, it can go up and increasingly go up. It's tied to the area median income as opposed to your income. So the price has been going up, of course, for everything. And we've been hearing a lot of it. People at Benfield especially have a hard time meeting all their basic needs. We help them with the food pantry coming, and we have different nutrition programs. But medication, I know, is an issue for a lot of people. They can't afford to fill all their medication needs because everything is just so expensive. So the rental assistance is extremely helpful for this group. If you look at the income levels of participants, participants in the program compared to the median income in Carlisle, you can see the red line is the 100, you know, that's the median income. And the other ones are different people who are in this rental assistance program. So it goes from about 7% to 20% of the area median income, making it really difficult to get by. You know, buying just your groceries and your regular sort of household products. There are also community benefits to having Benfield, to having this rental assistance and making it affordable for people. There are Carlisle residents who have downsized as they got older, either because their home was too big or they really couldn't afford their home anymore, and they were able to go to Benfield Apartments. Also relatives of people who live in Carlisle. A lot of people want to bring a relative to live closer to them, and it's really helpful that that's available. And of course, we also have some people in Benfield who are contributing a lot to Carlisle. We have someone who's a substitute teacher. There's another man who gets rental assistance. He's a music teacher and, and other volunteer, volunteers. And my last slide, it's a very short presentation, is just about sort of where we're standing now. So right now, we have 11 people. There have been some rental increases, so the price is going up to about three and a half thousand, I think, a month. I made up, I have another attachment that shows the prices and how they're sort of evolving. We had been using a, an outside contractor to provide the administration of the program. She set it up. At this point, we feel that we're able to take it over, especially because one of our staff had worked in housing previously. So we just terminated that contract, and now we're going to be doing the administration for the project ourselves. And, but I do think, having had this program start during COVID, I think that there is a need on the part of the town and the, and the council and agent to just sort of look at the program and decide how much help can be offered, how much help needs to be offered, what are the limits, all those type of things. Just because many towns have terminated their programs because they have different housing situations in Carlisle, and they just think it's prudent to, to look at it and reevaluate it. So that is my, in a nutshell, my presentation. And I can...
Phil, are you going to describe, why do I keep saying that? Sorry. Carol, are you going to tell us a little bit more about what you're asking for in terms of the funds or...
Yes, I can do that. I have a, let me see where it is here, I believe. So the funds that we're asking for, we have 2,000, starting in the March, we pay each month. So for March, we have $2,000 in funds. We have an excess of funds in our ARPA account for mental health counseling. I had, there was a miscalculation there. So one ask is to move 3,500 of that funds over to the rental assistance program where it's more in need. But we still need altogether, I'm sorry, this doesn't even show it right. We need $14,000 basically for this program through the end of the fiscal year. So if we can transfer the money, we cover all of it except for 8,500, and that's the additional amount that we're asking for in ARPA funds.
I, I just want, I think it, well, I'm just going to say,
Harold, I wonder if it makes sense to also just mention, in case folks are wondering, so what happens at the beginning of Fiscal 25? You know, what happens July 1? If you want to just mention the CPA application that COHS has put in.
We put in an application. We, I did the calculations and figured out the program for fiscal year 25 will cost 50, I think it was $50,000.
That's great.
Sorry, I don't have that with me, the CPC, but I think it was $50,000. So we put in an application with the Community Preservation Committee for funding that for fiscal year 2025.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, it's a question for Ryan. Where do you find 14,000 for the current fiscal year?
That's this, that's the ARPA funds.
I thought ARPA was going to do 3,500, but no.
35, you know, existing ARPA, it's mental health, but then for an additional...
Okay, I got it.
It's only the 8,500 that would be the additional classes.
All right. I have some questions.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so with this support, how much of the monthly rent are we helping with?
With, the majority of people are getting $400 a month. And there's a few that are getting less than 400 a month.
And what is that as a percentage?
Of their rent? It is anywhere from, in some cases, that covers 30% of their rent. In some cases, it might not quite cover the 30%, but that's just as high as we go. So some people, it might be that they're still paying, say, 50% of their income is used for their rent, but we only pay up to $400.
Okay. Is there, is there, is there like a clear understanding or reason as to why it's pretty much just Benfield?
Yes, because first of all, there's not a lot of rental housing in Carlisle. Village Court is all subsidized housing, so people are paying 30% of their rent there, 30% of their income towards their rent. Whereas Benfield, that's not the case. Benfield was organized differently, and so it's affordable housing as opposed to subsidized. So housing is very complex. I still don't have it all down, but basically, the, the amount of the rents are tied to the area median income, and so they can be raised accordingly. And if the, if prices are rising and the area median income in Carlisle did go up quite some, they're able to raise the rents. So people may move in and the rents are lower, but then they start creeping up.
Okay. But if somebody were living in an accessory apartment or were renting a, a home, would they be eligible for these funds?
Yes, we have one man who is living in a private apartment. He's renting a room in a home, and he gets rental assistance.
Okay. I think what I'm, I'm really interested in is what is the long-term solution and goal? I mean, I think this is something that we, as a town, should continue to support. And I think doing it in a way, I realize that we, you know, there's lots of things we've been talking about from a budgeting perspective. I would put this higher than a lot of other things. And I think that, you know, having it be this, you have to come on an annual basis and ask for a little bit more money, a little bit more money. I think, you know, if it grows, obviously, that would make sense that we'd have to come back. But I think this should be a little bit more part of our DNA. With that, I'll stop.
I, I think, I agree with, I have to say, I agree with you on that. And it, at the time that COA originally came to ARPA, ARPA didn't want to fund seed things that were going to end up being borne by the town. So the Housing Trust said, you know, we think we're going to have this one, this problem is not going to go away in another year or two. It's going to get worse. So at that time, at the same time that COA got their funds from ARPA, Housing Trust also applied for a $25,000 grant from CPS, CPC, and, and it was awarded. It went through our meeting. So there is, it is in the wheelhouse of CPC to support housing and people that, and support rental assistance in housing.
How much of that $25,000 is still...
None, because basically, what we're trying to do is shift everything totally to COA rather than having, because they're doing all the administration and everything else. There's really no reason for Housing Trust to be involved in this. So what we're hoping is that we get this little bridge done. So what we're hoping is that we get this little bridge done. And that in June, or rather May, when we go to town meeting, their new application will be approved and then the trust will give back their money to the CPC. But in the meantime, we would keep it as
When you said, my question was how much is left? And when you said none, you meant none has been spent?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did I say none? I meant none has been spent. Maybe, did we spend 400 or something before we, anyway?
Right. And, and I think that it makes sense if it is part of the trust or the, the housing component of CPC. I think somehow getting to a point where it's not kind of like this, we have to continually ask. That it's, it's really just a part of Carlisle's DNA that we're supporting this type of thing, rather than having to go to town meeting every year.
Well, you'll have to go to town meeting every year if you do it through CPC. If we decide we wanted to support this through the COA budget. Or COHS, really it's HS because you don't have to be a senior to qualify for it. We need to be talking about that.
Yeah, I think there might be other ways we could do it through CPC.
I mean, the nice thing about CPC, well, you can do multi-year, you know, ask for a larger amount for a longer time.
Year or, or auto withdrawals, right?
Or what?
Or auto withdrawals, right?
I'm not sure that's possible. I think they have to grant amount.
Okay.
But, yeah, okay, sorry.
It's okay. I just wanted to have that Conversation, I think, you know, it fits with our town five things on our master plan of caring community. And so, you know, having a portion of our funds supporting this is, you know, reasonable. It's just, my question was, how did we come up with the $400 initially? Or the, you know, what is, and, and where, you pulled it out of there.
We thought it was, we thought at the time it was a reasonable amount to be contributing to help these people out. It might have to go up because at a certain point, those, if the rents really jump up another six or seven percent, the 400 might, you know, they might be only covering, you know, 10% of the rent. And then people are underwater, you know, are paying 80% of their, their income. You know, we're trying to keep it so that they're paying closer to 30% of their income.
But it's, you know, not, that's just, you say they, but it's really just Benfield. But if this program expands, I think we really have to evaluate, you know,
We do.
What, because it, you know, right now it's, you know, a very small piece of our overall budget. But, you know, if it expands.
Actually, when you're talking about CPC money, we do pay in taxes. We do pay some of it. But the state gives us, yeah, well, but, so it's, I understand, but at least we're paying this with, you know, 80 cent dollars. And so
So I guess a couple of other questions than that discussion just brought up. You know, in, when, you know, in, in asking like, you know, what is that number? Is, is there now, after it has been around since beginning of COVID, is there no data that would support what we should be doing going forward? And I guess that's a question, I guess that's a question for Carol. Do we have data about the effectiveness of the program?
Well, effectiveness, I mean, that's, there's different, there's no exact way to measure, I don't think, the effectiveness. We, I have data, obviously, about, say, the income levels of people, how much they're receiving and how much the cost of living is. So I could do some sort of analysis of that sort. I think what I go by is more the phone calls. And I, I hear from these people a lot, you know, about what type of decisions they're making, what their needs are and that type of thing. And I, I hear a lot from people in this program and about different financial hardships that they have. So it's, I, you know, so I can do an analysis, I guess, that's what I'm thinking of, of the information I have. It's very hard. I did try to look at other towns and what they're doing, but it, it varies so much what the approach is and what sort of housing they have. And it's, which makes it pretty much, at least for me, I'm not sophisticated enough to make that sort of analysis.
Okay. But given that, you know, I understand, you know, this is Carlisle. But I just want to just understand, this, this is not like an age-based thing, right? It's just purely a need, a need
Income-based.
It's actually been for seniors.
Okay, so two people in the room just said
Sorry, so
No matter what, so
Yeah, Carol, the, the original proposal that Joan presented at town meeting that we approved on this, that was for the eligibility, it's only for seniors, people have a certain age that are renting? I thought it was anybody that's renting if they qualify in terms of their income.
I don't have an application form with me. I'd have to look at it. I don't know, I, I'm pretty sure it is seniors, but I'm, I couldn't say 100%. I'd have to look at it.
So then I'll just say one other thing, which is, you know, I mean, I completely support this. And that's probably clear. But I think that, you know, if we're really looking at the affordability of Carlisle, there's two levers we can move. You know, we can, we can help with the rental assistance and we can take a look at helping out on the taxes basis. And I think that we should be doing both of those.
Which we do do in some sense with the Senior Tax Worker Program.
That's senior only now, right?
Pardon?
That's, yeah, senior only now, so, yeah.
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 As I recall, the original intent, intent was for all, any and all rental assistance because it was ARPA. And it just so happens that most of our people who fall below the, you know, 80% of median income is our, our seniors in our town.
So we should just make sure of that because she thinks it's senior only.
But is there a limit?
Make a change.
To the, I mean, anyone who qualifies for age, well, there's no age, anyone who qualifies income can apply.
That's correct.
The fact we have 11, we could have 22.
We could.
We don't cap it. Okay.
Well, we do insofar as that we only have a certain amount of dollars. And once we run out of dollars, it's done.
Does that happen, Carol? Have people applied and we don't have?
It has not happened in this town. I know other towns have had that situation where they just have, don't have enough money to help everybody. So sometimes they do it that you can get it, say, for one year and then you can't get it further. Or they have a lottery type of thing and some people get it and some people don't. But we haven't had that issue.
So I think the question is the long-term sustainability. We get it, ARPA, it's great, we got ARPA, right? I think Nathan's going is the long-term
Yeah. Sustainability. And I think we have to do that another night because we're starting to run out of time. We've already five minutes passed, but I know you had some questions and I don't want to cut you off without your questions.
Starting.
I, I asked about the amount and how it got there.
Oh, okay. All right. I want to be sure you've got your questions out. So we do have a motion here and that's in regard to the ARPA.
Want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I, there are two of them. Should we do them separately?
Well, since they're both ARPA and they're us that's doing it, I think you can do them both.
Okay. I moved to transfer $3,500 from the funds received from ARPA for the mental health program to their rental assistance program. And I further moved to approve $8,500 in additional ARPA funds for the rental assistance program.
Second.
Any further discussion? We need to get this information to Scott so that he can put it in our, because he's the one that's been doing all the bookkeeping to make sure that we don't overspend our ARPA funds. We, this doesn't do it. I want to, a note to self, you know, get this to Scott.
My only comment would be, I think this is a really good discussion we've had and thinking about it and weaving it in budgets. So we should make sure, man of the chair, put it on somewhere.
Yeah, no, yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That was good. Great. So we, thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Said Carol, I'm in. Budget and Town Meeting Information Center, sent session.
I'm gonna change it to center.
Good, because that's the second time I've said it. Well, I think we're all a little out of our minds tonight.
So I have five minutes to put this budget into context. And then you have a, a bunch of guests tonight that can answer detailed questions about two or three of the biggest warrant articles here, which are the capital, capital articles, the building renovation and maintenance articles, and any lingering articles from the town meeting warrant. So I'm going to move quickly just to give context of the discussion.
Brian, is there anything we should be looking at while you're doing that?
Pop it up.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
So if you remember where we left the operating budget, adding 50,000 in ambulance receipts, which is a one-time fund, but recurring fund, dropped the average tax bill to about 3.65%. And then the select board said no more than 3% requests, which would reduce the operating budget to around a 3% average tax bill increase, which is what we're calling guideline. So in order to get there, I did reach out and inform departments that were over the 3% threshold and ask them and, and some other departments, to be honest, to see what we could, what we could give back on the town side. So I have about 30,000 in confirmed, no loss to service cuts that departments can make. They do have an impact on the departments, but they, they can be cut. There is another 50 to 70 pending discussions at board levels and, and other approval levels. Some of those include Board of Health, Library and Recreation, talking about using recurring revolving funds in order to offset some of their increases. The discussion at TSAC about increasing sticker revenue. And then this doesn't pop up. And then you will have pretty soon a health insurance decision to make. So this will be a recommendation from your IAC about structural changes to the health insurance that would alleviate some of the pressure on the health insurance budget and drop that around 3% so that you could realize some savings there. So overall, that would decrease the operating budget by somewhere between 70 and 100,000. So we'll put in 80, just so you can see it live. That would drop the average tax bill to 3.41%, close to where we were, still 120,000 to cut. And that's without any considerations from the schools, which your, our liaisons and everyone have reached out to, to talk to them about what they can do to help with this budget situation. So that's the operating budget where it stands now in terms of capital and free cash and reserve, just to give a very high level, shape this discussion.
Just really quickly, though, the capital budget impacts the operating budget, doesn't it?
Correct, yeah. Just trying to bucket it for understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so this is assuming that, that everything got approved and it's my mind, so please just work with me. So these are all of the, the capital requests that came from the full capital plan that's available on the town website and has been discussed. So red is road maintenance coming primarily from Chapter 90 or, or fully from Chapter 90. The yellow is, would be a debt article on the town meeting warrant, which I'll show you. And then the, we'll call it coral color is for a bundling of MFC requests, which they'll get to when they're talking about it. So in total, all of those equal 2.3 million in capital. But in reality, for, for your understanding of the finances, what that would mean is 1.124 million in free cash usage, 300,000 in Chapter 90. I'm going to get to this in a second because it's going to be a tad confusing. But the MFC funds that are available, the debt, and if you wanted to use 50,000 of the remaining ARPA that's in here, I have tied it to the MFC's request as contingencies for some of their articles. But that is just a recommendation that is not, is not anything formal. So just to briefly hit on this MFC funds, the MFC funds that have been appropriated at previous town meetings expire as of June 30. Once they expire, any committed funds, meaning stuff that's already been signed and is working, would stay. So this, anything that is over that or unassigned would then, pumpkin, right? Would turn into free cash. So although we are using 1.1 million for these requests, it would be offset by anything remaining from the MFC funds, up to around 200,000. So it's actually closer to 930,000 in free cash usage once you do the swap. And don't expect anyone to follow that. But that is monies that would again be realized for capital use in the next year. So it's not quite 1.1 million, it's more like 950. So again, just high level, what a capital article then would look like is 644. It would say available funds, but eventually be recommended as free cash. You'd have an article for engine three replacement, which would be a borrow. That would come into your operating budget eventually and hit some of that debt capacity we've been talking about a lot. MFC article, this, again, this is just speculative, but bundling everything is about $480,000 for a new MFC article for them to work on more capital. And then Chapter 90, so Chapter 90 is fully covered by this. In fact, we're getting about 450 if the governor is able to come through. So there's going to be some excess here. So that's going to be covered. And it's a whole nother talking point for another night, road maintenance. So lastly, because it's important, just want to show you, I did not, over. Not lastly, but lastly from me talking and then you asking questions and inviting people up. So what does that do to our reserves and some of your other financial policies? So down here, it says reserves after FY '25 use. So uses are appear, 100,000 in the operating budget, 1.124 without consideration of those MFC funds in terms of your capital plan. Then 118,000 in warrant article requests currently equals a total use of 1.3. If you subtract that from existing free cash, your remaining reserve is 12.66% of this proposed operating budget, which still has not been cut. So you're well above your guideline for reserves. I have a note down here saying if all of that went through like magic, you'd still have 234,000 above your guideline in terms of reserves to put in a capital stabilization for future building projects or future capital or to use this year or to do whatever you want with.
So, so Ryan, the 200,000 that gets repatriated from sunsetting MFC funds adds to that? Or is that all calculated in your math?
So high level, all of this, all of the, this year's stuff closes out on June 30. The state does all the calculations, what we didn't spend, what we took in for revenue, what, what is available for like these MFC funds. Then we get a certified free cash total around August. And that'll be the free cash total that carries. So this 200 would add to that total.
Right. So it's above this?
Yes.
Because you're taking it out again before you get paid back.
Yes. So to summarize, operating budget, still some chopping to do. The finance committee is meeting about that on Thursday. Capital, you're going to hear all of the individual discussions about the capital projects tonight. And at your next meeting, the warrant article is the same. And then CPA funds from the CPC is real money, but that is a different bucket as well. So those are where we're at right now with the budget process at a very high level with a lot of assumptions.
I, I have a quick question, Kate, if that's
Yes.
Yeah. So you, at the very beginning, you talked about the response from departments to our request to try to stay to 3% and that you'd gotten responses back. You mentioned that you hadn't gotten anything yet, we hadn't gotten anything yet from the school. Have, is that the only remaining department that has not responded to that request?
No. No, so the, the departments that are not, not in my sphere, right, are still debating it at their board and committee levels to discuss use of revolving funds, what cuts would mean, et cetera. Still trying to understand in some cases, their revolving funds, funds fee structures and how that would impact their departments. But I'm specifically talking about Recreation, Library, Health there. But they are making, you know, they are all meeting and actively discussing it to give a response.
Okay. Do you have any, any thought about timing in terms of when folks will be?
For your next meeting, for sure.
Okay, great.
I have a question about the MFC, if I may, if you could just put that, that one, the capital one back up.
Yep, and you could call Jerry right up if you want.
A presentation for them as well. So in looking at this, there's, I don't remember exactly what it was. But so there's 400 and something thousand dollars, right? Or 40 and 80,000 dollars for MFC items. 200,000 dollars is being recaptured. That 400 and 80,000 dollars, like the majority of that, I believe, was the elevators and air conditioning. Is that right?
Yep, 200 for the library, air conditioning and 200 for the elevator.
Okay, so of that 200,000 that is being recovered, I'm assuming that's just because we didn't have the time to do it. What, what that we really needed to get done didn't get done because that 200,000 dollars wasn't able to be spent in the timeframe that was needed. Because there's all of these things, I don't, just don't recall seeing them in a lot of previous years. So that's, I'm just wondering what
Bob Barker would say, come on down.
Bob Barker would say, come on down.
Right.
Behind door number one.
Yes. Okay, Jerry, I'm going to ask you to. Before you answer the question, to identify yourself.
I'm Jerry Lerman, Chair of the Municipal Facilities Committee. It's kind of a hard question to answer. There isn't anything specific that didn't get done. And, and actually, I, I think the amount of money that will actually roll forward into free cash is going to be something slightly less than two hundred thousand, somewhere between one hundred and two hundred thousand.
Okay, so if, just, just to repeat back what I think I'm hearing, it was. It was an overestimation on how much it might have cost rather than, we're not going to do these projects that are important.
Correct.
Okay. That's good.
And the, the process is complicated. When, when we come up with a number like the HVAC coils for the library. It's really a guess. We won't know how much it costs till we do an engineering study and then put it out to bid. Hopefully, the number will come in lower than our guess, but that doesn't always happen.
Right, okay. Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't saying anything about, about that at all. I'd much rather it come in under than over, right? So I just, I just wanted to make sure that nothing was being left undone that we really should be doing.
No, there, and if you look at the capital plan, looking out into FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, there are lots of things on the horizon. That will need to be get, will need to get done. And it's possible if. If, if we're lucky that some of the money appropriated in FY twenty-five would roll into FY twenty-six and could be applied to some of those projects too.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Okay. Any. Why do we want to do this about the, because. Why don't we go ahead, since you're sitting there, why don't we do your presentation? You sent us a, we have. An MFC document, but it looks like things have changed since we got this document. Is that correct? For instance, the, the paving for the.
Well, the paving for the library. On the initial plan, it was in FY twenty-seven. I, I proposed moving it into FY twenty-five, but I think in talking with, well. We, we're not going to do the paving until the construction, the renovation project is done at the library. We don't know exactly when that's going to get done.
It's not going to be in twenty-five, though, for sure. We know that.
So. If it, if it. Well, if we appropriated it in FY twenty-five, it would be available in FY twenty-six if, if that. Happens early in the year. But that's just some more money to appropriate, so. I think. The worst that would happen is they would. Start the project and finish it unexpectedly rapidly, and there would be a pause between when that work is done and when the paving happens.
Yeah. I, I think personally, I would rather not be raising funds that I don't need. And to sit on them. I don't think that's good. Management of.
But you, it sounds like from the process, you always have to overestimate, right? Because if you underestimate. You've got to stop and come back and get more money, right? So it's biased towards overestimation.
The, the worst case scenario is that we'll, we'll have two hundred thousand dollars earmarked, we'll, we'll get all the estimates done, we'll put it out to bid. And the biz will come at.
Higher.
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
You have to go, you have to stop and get more money. So, so the, what you're proposing here, like the repatriation of the hundred to two hundred. Actually demonstrates that that process is working, right? You. Overestimated, you presumably did the projects at less than you. Overestimated and there's money coming back. So that's okay, I think, right?
So I, I can talk about the four projects that are part of the four hundred and eighty thousand, if, if that's what you'd like to hear.
Yes. So it's all right, but I'm trying to follow where we are. So I'm looking at something we had in our packet that says proposed MFC request for five hundred and thirty thousand. Is that? Not what you're. Yeah, that's right. Looking at, but you said something different. You said more.
Four hundred and eighty thousand is.
Four hundred and eighty thousand.
Is where we're at right now.
I will.
I see because you added the contingency here. And then they had taken out the two hundred thousand. No.
So, so this is, this is the correct document here. And the error was mine, so. The total request for. The MFC articles is four, is four eighty.
Okay, so. Two of the projects involve the library, actually three of. Two of them involve library. And the reason why they're on the schedule now is because the library is doing this renovation project. And doing these projects in conjunction with that renovation makes a lot of sense. The first one is the HVAC coils. In the library, there are forty-three coil units in these little window. Things that blow hot air or cold air out. They're powered by. A plate that either brings in hot water or cold water, depending on the time of year. They're very old. I think some of them are. Original equipment, some are, were installed when the, when the new additions were done. They are leaking, they're old, they're inefficient, and what we'd like to do is replace them with newer units. That could be connected up to the building management system that would allow. Those units to operate more efficiently. They would use. They'd only use hot water when they needed heat and only use cooling when they needed cooling. Right now, they're either on or off. But that, that involves opening up those window boxes to replace them and also may involve running new pipes and new wires and doing all of that. When walls are being moved around as part of the renovation would make it much easier. The other library project is expansion of their mechanical room. If you've never been into the mechanical room at the library. You, you would be shocked and amazed. It's filled with stuff and now it has even more stuff because we've added the PFAS filtering system to it. There isn't very much room, not only to move around, but certainly not to work on the equipment that's there. As part of the, the HVAC coil. Project that might involve adding some additional variable speed pumps to make that system more efficient. Those pumps take up space and there is no space to put anything. So we'd like to. Expand the space that's available. There, there are actually two rooms. One right now has mostly electrical and the other has. Everything else. And we'd like to make more space available so we can put more additional. Equipment in there, allow. Or expansion of other possible things that might need to happen at the library and to make it easier for those. Pieces of equipment to be serviced. Another project is elevators. There are numerous elevators in town that are. Either approaching or past their expected life cycle and. We'd like to be prepared to replace those before they. Before they die and cause problems. And that's what the two hundred thousand, and again, that's an. An estimate based on some information we got from people that know elevators, but we haven't. We don't have a definite study. That we can use to put out to bid to get an actual cost for it.
They, they are going to do, I think it's going to be next week, though. We are going to study them so that number can become more real.
And is it, I see that it says it's the town hall elevator, but is that not necessarily the case? It could be one of the other elevators in town?
So the school elevator is covered by an ARPA grant currently that may or may not be returned, depending on how the study goes. And then the library is not a part of this yet. This funding request, but, but maybe if we get lucky.
But the thinking is we'd start with the town hall elevator. What's listed here?
Ideally, we do all three at once for savings, but we want to see if that provides any savings or any.
Got it. We don't know that yet.
And, and knowing. Knowing what it would cost to do one. Hopefully, it would be about the same. Or the other additional ones, and maybe there'll be some economies of scale. The other project is at town hall and, and involves renovating the, the four bathrooms to. To make them. More, more pleasant to use.
It wouldn't take much to make. They're pretty. Pretty bad.
The, the bathroom project also. Steven, who's on, if, if you want to speak to him about it, has, has mentioned expanding the. Utility closet over here because it, like, like the library is not big enough to handle the equipment and to work on it, so. It could be taking up one of the four bathrooms or a part of it in order to expand that room a little bit, just looking at that, not necessarily.
One of the things that we've been talking about is putting a PFAS filtering system in for town hall. We can't do it right now because there's nowhere to put it.
You want to put it with the electronics? Come on.
Wouldn't fit.
Okay.
Oh, if you add those all up, it comes to four eighty.
Okay, plus a fifty percent, a fifty K contingency to make it a total of. Five thirty.
So that could either be added to the article as contingency, or you could earmark some ARPA for contingency. There's several different paths you could take there.
Well, normally the Warren articles last three years. Is that correct?
That's what we've been doing.
And ARPA is going to be over with at December twenty-sixth, so. Of twenty-sixth, so that's only. Two years, so I don't know if you want to do that.
I realize this is a little bit counter to the whole conversation we were having about the capital expenses, but. In order to stop this float of building in contingency funds with every project. Would it make sense for us to do something like take this two hundred thousand dollar that's coming back? And put it into kind of an ongoing contingency fund? So that there was money that was set aside. As an ongoing contingency that hope we never, we never needed to use it, but we wouldn't have to build it into every single project unless that project was of a size that we knew that that contingency wouldn't. That amount wouldn't cover it. I don't know if that is possible to do legally with accounting. But it would, it would stop the, because every time we put in a contingency, we are raising that money. This, this would prevent that from happening.
I can't think of a mechanism that would allow that.
I would, part of, my, my limited understanding of the financing things is that if, if you put money in a stabilization fund, that's a great idea. The problem is taking it out, and in most of those kind of structures, it requires a town meeting vote to take it out.
Yeah.
That would be counterproductive to what I was trying to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, to the degree that, what, to the degree that we opt to use free cash to. Buy these things. We don't need to overestimate, right? If we need more free cash. That by itself is not, if the budget passes with these line items. They're capital, but they're still paid for through the. Free cash, then to Nathan's point, I think you. You can't just add more money to that.
Not without town meeting vote.
Even though you're using your own cash, you're not, you didn't separate it out as an article?
It has to put it, be put into the bucket. These men.
So the easiest way to state it is you're using the people's cash and they have to authorize it.
Right, but we routinely move operating expenses at the end of the year. We move things around. We don't go back to the town for that permission.
Yeah, we do.
You could, you could, you, you don't have to anymore because of the Municipal Modernization Act. They approve a total number.
Right.
Can move it in the operating, but this is outside the.
So you can't do it on capital items.
Not in capital, no.
Okay, okay.
Just trying to make it easier, but it's impossible.
Well, the over, I mean, again, I would say, I agree it's inefficient, but it seems like. The process is working. We got things done and we didn't. Underestimate, we overestimated and now it's coming back in, right?
Yeah, it's just that every year that just means our budget is going up with this. Every single year, our budget's going up.
But don't forget, like we just said, like the hundred or the two hundred is going to come back in.
Come back into us, but it's not going to go back into taxpayers' pocket.
That's true, but.
No, but in the long run.
We're not going to raise that hundred again, because we're going to use it on the next batch of.
Right.
Of projects.
In the long run, it should say.
We always do that. That's correct.
Well, that's, that's the fiscal discipline.
Yes.
Right.
We're trying to keep those, that, that free cash. To a specific, you know, like, what was it, ten to twelve percent?
Yeah, but that's different. It's different. That's, that's a completely different thing. Keeping free cash at ten to twelve percent means that we're spending it. Not that we're not. Getting.
But we're spending it to keep, in order to keep the taxes down.
As long as that's what we're doing with free cash, as long as it's not, oh, well, let's pay for this other project with free cash.
You suddenly felt you had a windfall and you bought something you shouldn't buy. That was bad.
This is why we have the five-year capital plan, because we're only using it to fund those things.
But on that, on that note, I mean, I have it up the budget. The, the, the broader question, I, I guess. MFC vetted the projects that it produced, right? I mean, the four that you've mentioned, but there's like fifteen things on our, you know, there's fifteen or some number of line items, maybe more. I thought in the past you vetted pretty much all the capital, right? All the facility-related capital. But there's lots of things in here that the schools do. And DPW and stuff, I mean, not the trucks and things, but the, the, the facility-related things, it doesn't look like you vetted all of them.
That is correct, but we, and actually, the MFC toward the school with Stephen Canerney, so we are becoming educated in. The facilities requirements of the school building.
So the over, the scrubbing or this. Second-party review of. Other requests comes from where? Like who, that's the school's. The school, the school does its own and says this is what we need, but there's no. Other group that. Looks at it other than now we're looking or thinking.
Now, well, now the MFC is taking on.
Well, if, 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 if the official charter of the MFC gets broadened to include the school. And that, that would become part of.
Right now, like, I mean, I love Steve Canerney. I think he's great, but, you know, he says he needs. Well, he's great. He needs forty thousand or the school needs forty thousand for concrete work, but nobody's. Evaluated that.
Great transition. So we have Brian, Jim and Steven here to talk about the school projects.
Thanks. I, I didn't plan a, a presentation, but since this meeting started, I created one.
Oh.
I thought it was great.
Uh-oh.
I just got to figure out how to share my screen here and I just. Put a bunch of photos together. To host disabled, you'd have to enable that.
You are enabled.
Thank you. All right, so. For. Well, I have to use this. I can't just use my own computer to browse this stuff. Let me see files. This is terrible. Want to help me out, Ryan? I have folders all set up to show.
So hit share screen.
Okay. And then I can, then I can just pick around, right? So what's the first subject? How's this? The first subject, I found the first sign of spring today. Happy spring, everybody, coming soon. All right, so the alarm system, since I have the screen up. The alarm system, I, I pull up the floor plans to give you an idea, or we can look at this photo. If, can you see my mouse moving around?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, the only part of our. Our burglar alarm that works is Spalding. And Robbins. All the wiring under Wilkins is corroded. When I had simplex out to find the initial problem with alarms all the time, we found a fried motherboard in a very expensive fire panel. That they're using for the alarm panel. So the old wiring underground is thirty-five, thirty-eight years old that runs all the way from here, all the way back to the new building. The Cory building, the wiring is. Pretty much, I'll give you some examples here. Sorry about my spring picture there. This is some of the splices I found. It looks like it was done in-house. So this is our alarm system. And you see this here as a resistor with a broken wire on it. And this is, this is campus-wide. It's not like a couple isolated areas and this is like in central receiving above Cory, just boxes ripped open. Tape on wires. So. For. This is the original motherboard. We found the fried, the fried diode. This was causing all the false alarms. for um, this is the original motherboard. We found the fried, the fried diode. This was causing all the false alarms going to police station two or three times a day, but that's been solved. So the, for the burglar alarm system, I call it burglar alarm security system, uh, American Alarm gave me a a figure to do the entire property over again, all contacts on all doors uh, in wiring. This is an example of the, the wiring at the doors. This is not even connected. This one's connected, but the wires are just hanging down where some can tear them out. And this is campus wide, except for Spalding. Spalding's wiring is pretty much intact. It's only ten years old, twelve years old. Uh, so that's the alarm system. In a nutshell, it's just old corroded copper wire underground and currently uh, only a, a one building or one, two buildings are secured. Uh, so that's a, a thing that needs to be, needs to be done if we care about security of the building. Uh, for the walkway.
You didn't complete the sentence that American Alarm, did they give you a quote?
Yes, I have a quote to do the entire property over and I believe I want to save forty-eight thousand to do every single door. Um, just to give you some context of how this Spalding was wired, there, there is twenty-one motion sensors from in the first floor hallway by Jim's office, from the window to Jim's office, there's twenty-one motion sensors and there should only be two. So there's, there's way too much wiring in the building and there, there's two motion sensors in each classroom about a foot away from the glass window. It was just not thought, well thought out when they were laying the stuff out. Uh, also, if you get an alarm, the panel was never reprogrammed when Spalding was built. So if an alarm goes off in Corey, I mean, Spalding, if you, if you broke in the front entrance of Spalding, when that calls out to uh, the police dispatch, it comes up as Corey. So when police dispatch calls me at two in the morning and says, we have an alarm in Corey, I say, okay, um, they go out, take care of it. When I go in in the morning and log into the system, the system says it's Spalding. So uh, there's a lot of um, wires that are shared. So basically Grant and Wilkins were shared, but they're not even connected to anything now. Uh, Robbins and uh, Robbins and Grant, Spalding were connected and Corey, so the why, the phone lines are shared. Uh, I recently had radio boxes put in uh, to eliminate all that wiring. And we're trying to, we're trying to do, fix what we can to keep it going, but it needs, it needs a full update.
What else you got, Stephen?
All right, so, so the back walkway, these pictures I just pulled up, I have, I can get you better pictures, but this is the back of Wilkins. Uh, there's the, over by Jim's office, the entrance. So this is the main walkway. This shadow is the overhang, which only sticks out to about here on the walkway, but there's no drainage. The walkway is pitched towards uh, Wilkins, which is slabbed for the most part. There is a small basement section. But this fills up with water. It's, it's cracked. Uh, uh, there's a lot of, it's, it's an ADA nightmare, this whole courtyard, which is a different subject, but well, sorry about that. This is my uh, quick presentation here. So uh, like this, this is out of a classroom, I believe, Wilkins one twenty, and it's just right in the middle of the walkway. You walk down this walkway, you're going to trip over that if you, if you you know, a kid's texting or reading a book or something, they, they can just trip over that. So the, if, when I'm wa, looking at all this rain coming down, I have a video to show you. If this, oh, this area here was all dug out, pro- properly pitched and this be- becomes the, the level of the walkway across, it would, it would, it would pitch the opposite way. Down at the end of this walkway, there is a storm drain in the grass, but there's no drainage for the whole length of the courtyard. So this would have to have a drain pipe put underneath a proper storm drainage. Now I'm going to show you uh, this is, this is the entrance to go into Grant out of the courtyard, which is, doesn't meet ADA requirements. It should be no, no height in three quarters. This is about an inch and a half of uh, of um, pavement. And uh, so that's, that's just, that's not a good presentation, but it just gives you a rough idea of what the walkway looks like. Uh, I do have pictures of the concrete, which I have in my ADA folder. As soon as I pull it up here, sorry. So this is the uh, front of Spalding. Uh, this, these, these, the six slabs here, and if you notice, the concrete color is different. So I'm new to Carolisle, but from my experience in doing concrete work, it appears that this section was poured after, probably because they didn't have all of this part in yet, when, maybe when they were building the school. And this concrete is raised, so it's, it's getting torn up. Uh, they may have used salt on all this concrete prior to me. Uh, it should be calcium or magnesium on snow, on concrete, but uh, that, that causes spalling and chipping, but this was more of it being raised and being uh, chipped up. Uh, this is a better picture of that from another view. So it's a pretty big section. These are about, uh, I believe six, five foot sections, so you got ten by fifteen area, one hundred and fifty square feet there. So I had the concrete guy that worked for the DPW come over and look at this just to give us an idea on that. This is the main stairwell going into the building. Uh, so same thing, this slab would be the chipped up and re, I mean, jackham it out and rebuilt or just, just rip, chipped up and patched to make it uh, safe. But that is the main entrance of the school. This is the top step. This top piece of granite, which is very, very heavy and huge, is leaning, leaning forward. You can't see the pitch. Uh, normal staircases should have a gradual pitch for drainage, but this is dropped down far and it's probably because uh, we got ice in here, got frost heaves and lift, lifted up, and then that caused damage to the concrete and uh, around the um, handrails. I think I have a picture there, right here. So that, that in turn with the con, with the granite moving and stuff, it caused this concrete to uh, crack around the handrails, which we don't want those to get damaged. Uh, this was a handrail that just rotted out recently. I took it out. That's the first set of stairs from the bottom lot up to the main lot. Uh, the stairs are in pretty good shape. They could use some kind of uh, top coat. Uh, so for pricing, I, I have no, no um, idea of what this type of work's going to cost. The, the back, the first part was the walkway and I just used my experience from having driveways installed on my jobs and stuff and kind of count what a price, but if it's something the DPW could help with, with this walkway, maybe that could be done in-house. Uh, let's see what else we have here.
The other two items, Stephen, are the soffit and the wastewater treatment repairs.
Right, and I just want to, I just want to show you an idea of how much water, this is, and I'll go right over to that in a second. This is um, this is the Wilkins basement, the only part that's underground. The rest is slabbed. So here's, here's a video of the walkway when it's raining out. So you can see the pitch of the water going towards the building. This is slabbed. This water get, gets right up on the building, in the vents. Uh, and it, even it doesn't matter if it's sprinkling or pouring out, because it's a very low pitched roof, so it's always coming direct down right there. There is a storm drain way down by the nurse's office here, so from Grant all the way down, it needs to be connected and I, I I'll have to look at the site plans, but I believe this pipe goes over to under the plaza, all the way up to the corner of where all the storm drains join in. Uh, this is actually in the basement, the last rainstorm we had. That's an electrical pipe with two hundred and eight volts in it.
Oh.
That's for our well. This is inside a fire panel. It, from Spalding, you know, well, I'm glad they changed the, yeah, that's the fire alarm system where the water was pouring in. So the thing that bothers me is this was done during the Spalding project and all, all this was left there. It should have all been torn out. It's underground and wide open and rotted somewhere under this slab. And that, so when it rains out, this is what we get in our basement. So that gives it, this paints a little picture on the walkway. Not saying putting a new walkway and it's going to get rid of this, but you have that slab and the water has nowhere to go but the little tiny basement that we have down there.
Stephen, that seems like a lot more than forty thousand dollars worth of work.
Well, that was, that, that forty thousand was just for that courtyard. I don't think it would be too much more. I mean, to to drop a, a four inch or six inch PVC drain pipe to join in down and put a trench drain along the edge where the water comes off the roof and just repave that and pitch it properly. Uh, uh, like I said, I, I just threw a number out on that part to guess the walkway. The concrete was, I started the concrete thing when we started working with Ryan on the ADA committee. So they asked me if I had any ADA items I liked to add, and that's when I started pulling in all the, in, investigating stairwells and and staircases and concrete slabs and things like that. So I think the last item was what, the wastewater treatment plant, Ryan?
And the soffit, yep.
Oh, the soffits, I have no, no pictures of, but if you, you know, your soffit on your house, you have like a six inch overhang up to a fo, up to a foot. The soffit on Wilkins is approximately three feet or four feet sticking out where you saw the rain coming down. Underneath that uh, is, they're all covered with mold and some of the, uh, it may be like half inch plywood is starting to um, get, get wet and sag, uh, so it needs repair, but it's also on all of Robbins as well. Robbins doesn't need much of a repair. It needs more of cosmetics, uh, removing mold, uh, uh, priming, painting, but the Wilkins needs a little bit of carpentry work as well. So I don't have any photos, but I can, I can have something for you in eighteen hours if you want. I'll have it sent over. This is the uh, wastewater uh, study. I, I sent this to the MFC as well as Ryan. This is, there's some pictures just to give you. What's that?
In their packet too, they can see it.
Okay, uh, so thi- this is just some photos to show, and what, what these photos are showing is the conditions of the tanks. So this is the exterior of the tank. Um, and I can't really zoom in on, it's a sm- small resolution photo, but uh, it, there's no way of knowing what, how thick or how drastic this crack is in this tank. With, this is like a coating on the outside. So uh, what Weston Sampson provided is a fifteen year plan. And the first part would be a study with a metal, metallurgist or some scientist or whatever, some machinery that came in and they, they can tell exactly what the failure point of this thickness of this metal is. And then once they know if they can repair it by that study, they'll, they'll empty it, they'll clean it out, sandblast it and recode it, and then it will give you another ten years. Uh, this is, I don't know the names for all these parts of the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, this is one that's just recently getting the media change, but uh, they, they took, Weston and Sampson took these photos to show the areas that require, and, and these go right hand in hand with the presentation. This is the old technology for the um, uh, the system that tells you in some, whatever's going on at the wastewater treatment plant or whatever we, whatever generates a report to Weston and Sampson. But the technology right now is, is it's on a cell, a cell signal. I know Bill um, Rissow has, you know, explained that there's a um, uh, network over there, uh, fiber optics, uh, so we, but we can't just plug a fiber optics cable into this and that, and magic happens. It ha, it has to be updated. So this is the um, the study uh, you, you all saw, and the things I highlight, the reason this is twenty twenty-three, I didn't receive this, receive this file until uh, late twenty twenty-three, so I got it late. Uh, they, they didn't, never sent it. They had it all prepared and never sent it. Uh, but tho- those are the numbers anyway. It's based over, I believe, fifteen year study. And the priority ones are uh, highlighted in yellow. And uh, right here, it gives you the timeline of when, when they, when they recommend things be changed. I really don't have, I, if you have any questions on that, I.
But Ryan, you leveled loaded it, right? You did like roughly seven hundred thousand spread over five years.
Uh, I didn't. Stephen did.
Okay.
The, the report captures that, so he's picked out the critical incidents for now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I under, I appreciate all of that. They, they didn't have straight line it though, right, Stephen? You, you decided to straight line it for.
They kind of did, they kind of did, because they go by what, what year they recommend it being changed, but uh, what I, what I did is went for the, those critical, real critical things. And some things could be, there might be some things that can be done in-house. Uh, like the small money things, but the tanks and all that. The, the, the main, the uh, main tank, which is the wheel that spins, is like uh, is like brand new. It has, it's, it's, there's nothing going in. There's not much waste. Uh, there's not much waste coming from the school. It's mostly uh, water. There's no, there's not much feces waste, to put it plainly. Uh, so that the wheel is really just spinning around in clean water. Uh, so that, that part of the uh, the plant is in well, good condition. It's, it's the parts that do all the uh, hard work and the affluent, I believe is the term, before it goes out of the building.
So just, it's tangential to this discussion, but it relates to things we talked about last night in terms of if we had more dense housing over there. How much, it, let's say it's all repaired the way it should be. How much, like what percent of its capacity does the school use? Is there extra capacity to that plant?
I can, I, I think there is. I can find out, because the, the person that's working there, if it's been working there for twenty years, told us that we don't even need wastewater plant for our school. Uh, once it's built, you have to keep it. Once it's in, once it's functioning, then you have to maintain it. Uh, so he believes that we could have more stuff going in that, but I don't know with the actual flow. If you're talking about gallons per minute, that.
I wasn't getting that specific. I just was looking.
All right.
Alternatively, we could make it smaller.
Well, um, so, so is it, is it true that this plan that we got um, from Sampson, Weston, Weston Sampson, um, that's a twenty year repair plan? Or this hundred and forty-three thousand dollars a year, is that repairs or is that maintenance?
Both.
It's repairs, replacements. It's, it's twen, it's, it's aging. It's, I think it's twenty, twenty or twenty-two years old now.
So how much, how much are we spending on it operationally for maintenance and operations on it?
It's about eighty thousand a year, just for the, for them to do the water testing and general maintenance of it.
I'm sorry, did you say eight or eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty thousand a year.
That's um, I believe that's how much the contract is. I'm, I'm me, I'm trying to, um, I took a, two other companies through the entire town to see if we can get all the town buildings under one company to try to reduce costs. Uh, because currently we use in uh, small water systems for the school water testing, the library water testing, and I believe the town hall. And we have Weston Sampson for the, the wastewater. And then we have second wind water for the filtration. So I'm trying to get, I'm trying to see if we combine all this to one vendor, if we can reduce costs by having one vendor take care of the entire, all the public water systems.
So Madam Chair, you have uh, DPW Police Communications and the Conscom. Not rushing, I'll stay here all night, but.
No, I know, and we only have until eight forty-five on our agenda, so I'm going to ask, um, what's it come first? DPW's police? Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Stephen. That was good. I liked the pictures.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are you, are you uh, finished with me?
For now.
Okay.
Thanks, Stephen.
So uh, I'm here to discuss a couple of uh, capital items for this year. Uh, one of them would be to replace uh, one of our one tons. We have two aging one tons. Um, uh, it was the standard procedure for me to go out with the old and in with the new, but after conferring and going over data with our old mechanic who's left, a new mechanic, uh, I've come up with the analysis of replacing the two thousand eleven one ton, which has a hundred fifteen thousand, and the reasoning for that is um, back in twenty eighteen, it, a retired worker struck a boulder and caused some minor front end damage and some minor frame damage. So um, at the time, there was no real incidence popping up with that. And uh, subsequently, a year, actually about six months later, the ball joint started going. And a month later after that, the tie rods went. And uh, it, it needed an alignment, so we did that. And uh, the wheel bearings were going, all within one year. And, uh, the wheel bearings were going, uh, all within one year. And then the, uh, we rebuilt the front drive shaft because the, uh, pitch was off on that one. And, uh, a year after that, we replaced both tie rods again. I know on a personal vehicle, I've had one for, since twenty fourteen, and no tie rod issues at all, and these are pretty expensive repairs that keep reoccurring within six to twelve months.
Keep that up, you have a brand new truck.
Truck is sounding like me.
So then we replaced the tires, uh, a year later after that. And, uh, steering boxes and tie rods again, another year after that, so you could see the, the
Yeah.
way this one was going. The rot on this truck, the dump body is like disintegrated, it needs to be, I have a whole new dump body on it. Uh, so going back to the older truck that we have, it's a twenty, uh, twenty, two thousand and six, I'm sorry. Uh, diesel one ton that has a hundred fifty-four K on it. And, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, uh, we swapped the dump body off of a old one ton that we surplused out. The body was intact, uh, no work needed at all, it still remains that way today. The injectors, the motor was repurposed, refurbished in, uh, August of twenty nineteen. Uh, the whole top end was taken off of that. And, uh, you know, fixed and everything's working great with that, so this truck is older, but way more solid and durable, uh, I think the, uh, life expectancy left on this truck would be eight to ten years, whereas opposed to truck three, which is a twenty eleven, would be, you know, need to just continually have to fund it to keep it running and passing inspections and stuff like that. So, um, going over the estimates, I had planned out for around eighty to eighty-five thousand to replace a new one. But since then, the, uh, chip shortage happened, and there was, um, a hold on some cabin chassis that were difficult to obtain, and I got another estimate during this week from, um, McGovern MHQ for a replacement, uh, one ton, that comes to ninety-six thousand, oh my god, six hundred and eleven. And that is with the new Iroquois style, um, dump body, which means, uh, the newer one tons we have have scissor lifts, when the dump is lifted, lifted in a scissor method. And they're hot, they sit higher on the ground, they're more durable, the two that we have. Uh, so those are good for stumps and digging graves and heavy duty stuff. This one, we can repurpose the chipper box off of truck three that we want to get rid of. And everything that we use this for would fit on the new truck. It would be, uh, a perfect swap, everything lines up perfectly. Uh, there's a diesel option for that other truck as well, which I think we can get away with the gas, but the diesel is a little more expensive, it is roughly, uh, ten thousand more.
The, the cost of the diesel or the?
Cost of the complete truck, uh,
Truck itself, not-
One ton dump with a plow, power angle plow, all set to go. Uh, sent through Donovan and they retrofit everything, do all the plumbing for the, uh, hydraulics and everything. So that, that covers that truck.
So Jim, what's the ask then, is it more like ninety-seven K?
So the, the plan I presented tonight has a hundred thousand in it for this truck.
Okay, good, the one in the packet is eighty.
I've updated it, tonight was the most recent numbers.
Yeah, that was before all the chip shortage and doing research on obtaining a new truck, so. The, I have also on there a glass container for the transfer station. Uh, we have two twenty yard containers that are thirty plus years old. Uh, they've been repaired, um, numerous times on the, the ribs that hold the whole structure together. I don't have any pictures unfortunately, but the glass is actually pouring out of there, and we cannot, we would take little U channels of steel and reweld them, but there's nothing to reweld them to whatsoever. So I had estimated that at around fifty-one hundred dollars to replace, uh, a year or two ago, and they actually came back pretty close to that at fifty-two hundred, uh, with a, a eight hundred dollar shipping fee, because it originates in New York, to ship it up here. Those are the two, um, capital items that are requested.
And would you prefer the gas over the diesel?
Um, for, for the purposes that we're going to use that for, yes. The, the, the diesel one that we have that we're going to keep is more fuel efficient, more powerful. Uh, but what we use it for, it supersedes this by far, and the, the newer one, all the stuff that we have on this for chipping, then we have a large storm. We can use the five fifties for gathering stumps and grave digging and all that, where we have a chipper box that we can repurpose onto the new truck. So you see us driving around with the chipper, it's capable of towing our chipper, set it right up and just-
Whether you go diesel or gas would change that interoperability between them?
Um, not necessarily, uh, it's just more expensive, and I think, uh, we, we have, um, uh, you know, to save the town ten grand, I think we could get by with, with the gas option.
But it's like a twenty-year truck, right?
Oh, yes, uh, anything, um,
Ten grand over twenty years is like, you know, it's not that much a year if it's more, to Nathan's point of-
Yeah, I don't want to, there's more fish on you if you don't want a diesel.
Oh, oh, I, I mean, preferably, yes, diesel, but I think we could get away with gas.
So I mean, I think if we just talk about sustainability, it's better, better gas mileage, better fuel economy, why would we not do the, why would, you know?
That directly, that correlates to this example that I gave you to start with. This is a, the, the truck three is a gas, and, uh, that one's no power, dying very fast, this is a two thousand six. And it's still very good.
We're talking about a ten percent difference.
Yeah, so go diesel.
I, I think what I'm hearing is, uh, go diesel.
I agree. I mean, I'm, I'm open to all options, just wanted to, you know, try to save a few thousand dollars here.
But I think, long term, I think you say-
I mean, in the long run, like you say, it's definitely worth it.
Yeah, sometimes penny wise and pound foolish.
No, it's perfect, because you let us make the decision.
We're on the hook for the additional spending. Yeah, but you know, it, no, it makes sense. I mean, I have a pair of boots that, you know, I paid two hundred dollars, you know.
It's better fuel economy, I would-
Yes. Twenty years ago, when you prorate that over the, you know,
And the diesel, diesel fluctuates a little less than the gas prices as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right now, sometimes.
Right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes.
Alright, thank you.
Fortunately, we don't pay taxes, so.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Alright, Chief, you're up. Again, schools.
Hi.
Hi.
So for the capital budget items that, um, I presented for review is, uh, we're requesting two, uh, police cruisers. Right now, the cost for a hybrid police vehicle is about forty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, thirty-five cents, um, that's from-
Okay, forty-nine K, alright.
Um, that's from McGovern. And Global, who's our current upfitter, which, uh, by upfitting, that means putting the lights, the sirens, all the police stuff into the vehicle. Um, we have a price of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty, eighty cents. So for one cruiser, it comes to about seventy-two thousand, thirty-seven fifteen.
Seventy-three.
McGovern is the, like, the go-to source for municipal vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, for municipal, yep. Um, currently, right now, our fleet is pretty agent, uh, is aging. Um, again, I don't, I wasn't here, I, I do have previous experience from my other department where I think during COVID, cruisers got delayed, the supply chain issues, which kind of kept vehicles running at a longer cost and speed, um, adding those miles onto the cruiser, so currently we have five vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles on them, um. And the repairs are starting to add up as well, they're starting to, to go in. Recently, uh, this past week, we just had another one in for, for a fuel pump, so, um, they are getting used and they are going in for maintenance.
What, what is your typical cycle on us, when you said a hundred thousand miles and then you say we are, what do you?
So typically for a line car, which is twenty-four, seven, um, you know, three sixty-five going all, all the time, um, I, my opinion is about sixty-five thousand miles, um, total for, for life, before it goes, no, not for a year, sorry, for life of the vehicle, before it goes to a, to a, uh, to a backup capacity. Um, I, I would say for a year, you're probably looking at maybe fifteen to twenty thousand, um, per, per cruiser, if I'm looking at one of our cars.
For a cruiser that is being used twenty-four, seven, seven days of the week?
Yes.
That in, in car lab, we're using, you're saying you're roughly adding fifteen thousand miles a year?
Give or take.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
So, I mean, in personal vehicles, that's not a lot of mileage, so they get pretty, what's the hard duty, the acceleration?
They run constantly.
So would it, i- i- is there any fleet management data suggests maybe to not run them all the time, like have more vehicles that run not twenty-four, seven, or? I mean, is any departments experimented with?
Uh, not to my knowledge, I know that, you know, um, police often patrol, um, the town, the sectors that, that are in, within town and responding to calls, setting up on traffic enforcement, so there's-
Now, I'm not questioning the use of the vehicle, I'm saying if it's the constant use that lasting only sixty-five, a modern vehicle lasting, less than a hundred thousand miles seems like not much.
Right.
So, and if you're saying the cause is that it's continuous operation, it doesn't get a rest, I don't know why a vehicle needs a rest, but let's just say it does. Is there any philosophy that says instead of, say, I'm just picking two vehicles running twenty-four, seven, you have three vehicles, each of which run like sixteen hours a day, is there any data in any department that suggests you might get better life management out of that?
That's a great question, I'm, I've not heard of anything like that, but, um,
Might be worth asking, I mean, I just, like your own car, you'd be pretty disappointed if you only got sixty-five thousand, right? I realize you get harder duty, but-
Right, I think the main part is the sixty-five thousand, the, it's not the end of the life of the vehicle, it goes to
Right.
you know, to a spare car, which often gets pulled in as things go through routine maintenance, so it's not, sixty-five thousand isn't the life of the, end of life.
Right.
Isn't it, yeah.
Well, we have one right now that's at a hundred and thirty thousand, that's presenting a lot of issues.
So I think our target previously, and, and talking about budgets and everything, um, was replacing it a hundred thousand. So that sixty-five thousand is a massive drop over what we've seen in the past.
Wait, Nathan, you're saying replacement, but he was saying it just gets shifted to a, a second line car.
You know, be- before we were, if, if I'm remembering right, we were told that it had to go into that next level after a hundred thousand.
Oh, I see, okay.
Um, I may, I may not be remembering it properly.
Next level as of not-
Like second line car, your sixty-five target was a hundred target before.
And what is the, so, um, what is between the, between, I may have the terminology wrong, I apologize, but between being a first line car that's being used twenty-four, seven, and then shifting into the next, uh, category, what is the length, what is the typical life of one of our police vehicles being used that way?
Years.
Years.
Yeah, so we have the oldest vehicle on the fleet right now is a two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand sixteen?
Not very old.
Yeah, it's, huh, they're not very old.
And, I mean, again, you, you know, you know your peer group, you came from a different department, is that's pretty comparable to other, say, suburban departments?
Yeah, I would say that, um, where I came from was a little bit more, uh, city, so they're, you know, they revolve a little bit quicker.
They what?
They revolve in and out a little bit.
Because they get harder, it's a little harder in city, but-
But here, I think, um, you know, you see the higher mileage, which is good.
So that twenty sixteen vehicle, we've gotten about fourteen thousand miles a year out of it.
Yeah, it's at a hundred and twenty, it's almost, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, where's that?
It's in the packet.
I know.
You know, go down to, or go down further. A lot, a lot in this packet, for us. Yeah, it's in the packet of the very last line, yeah, yeah.
You're re- you're looking to replace the two twenty-sixteens and move them into active service, right?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, once again, the end cost for all of, for, for one vehicle is how much?
The end cost is, uh, about seventy-two thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifteen.
That's just for a regular Explorer?
Yes. That's for hybrid, sorry.
The hybrid, the hybrid, right?
And the hybrid feature, I, I mean, is it used, I can't, it's hard for me to imagine that they're using the electric, if they're running it all the time, they're not really using the electric feature of the hybrid, right?
So, yeah, it's not a plug-in, it just-
So, yeah, okay, recharges, I don't know, is it? We've, we're talking about sustainability, but we should not do window dressing sustainability. I mean, if, if the hybrid truly is better mileage, then sure, we know that.
So the mileage isn't-
I mean, miles per gallon, the efficiency, I should say, not-
Yeah, so I would say that the savings, looking at most recent fuel was probably about ten more miles.
Forget, per gallon.
Yeah, per, per vehicle.
Ten more, you-
Yeah, like for, um,
And a tank, you mean you get ten more miles out of it?
Yeah.
It's not a-
It's not a tremendous amount. Cost difference, the cost difference, so the cost difference for a hybrid is it's a little bit more expensive than a gas as well.
Right.
To purchase.
The purchase.
Right.
It's probably about, I, I think the last quote we had was probably about sixty-five hundred less.
For a non-hybrid?
Yes.
I mean, I'm just-
And then there's shortages, so that's the other thing, so Ford most recently canceled the hybrid
Right.
for personal use, and they're focusing on police.
Oh, really?
So there is, uh, there is a bit of a stoppage right now for hybrids as well, so.
Meaning it's harder to get them. But, I mean, I'm just thinking of what I perceive the police cruiser usage to be. Lot of stops and starts, you know, acceleration, blah, blah, blah. That doesn't typically lend itself to a hybrid, the hybrid, I think, functions effectively when you're cruising along the highway and-
Better in the city than on the highway.
Yeah.
Is it? Or better?
Regenerative braking.
Regenerating, you put your-
But I also think that just sitting there idle, it would use less fuel, but I guess it has to then recharge it as it gets down. I'm just thinking of in my Prius, if I'm just idling, it does kick on every now and then.
Regular cars do that too, right?
So I just want to understand too, so the continuous service part is, so if it's, i- i- if, if it's, it's, it's out on the road with somebody driving it, doing, you know, police work
Yes.
all the time.
Or it's sitting somewhere at a, you know, traffic-
Like a traffic, right.
Are they idling on it, sitting in? The, the car's still always running, obviously.
Yeah, the, some of the equipment inside of the car needs for, for example, if they're doing traffic enforcement, the radar needs the car to be on.
Yeah, okay. But you, I, I don't know whether we just fell off of this, but I, I thought, sort of following up on what Nathan said, that we used to have it be just sort of a automatic yearly, um, up, you know,
One a year.
Yeah.
It was one, one, two, one, one, two.
Yeah.
One, two, and there was a year, there was one, one, one and a half.
Yes. So, just in terms-
I haven't seen the half, yes.
Terms of trying to, well, you know, make this more, um, even, you know, and it might be helpful to then look at what we have and where you to try to get it to where you're doing, you know, a certain amount each year, rather than some years more, some years less, I, I don't know if that's-
That was the initial goal of the, of the five-year plan that I had put together, is to get us to a point where we can reassess some of these older aging cars and see how, where we're driving them and what's going on and-
Yeah, I think we're kind of used to a cadence, it'd be good to know, because I don't remember, like, what was our cadence before and how does this kind of fit into it? Not necessarily true that, you know, you're new, we may change that cadence, but just kind of understanding how, how it, it flows, I think would be good for me anyway, just to know, because we have always been doing one, I think it was one, one, two, one, one, two. That was, that was how we kept-
Is this in the cycle of one, one? Is this in the cycle of one, one, two?
It's a, it's, the cycle's two, one, two, one.
Two, one, two, one?
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Over five years, sorry.
That's your cycle, but I'm, the cycle you inherited.
I don't, I don't know the, I don't, I don't know the cycle.
Remember?
Last year was.
I understood it to be one, two, one, two, one, two.
Okay, alright. Hmm, okay.
It'd be great if we could just, I don't know, figure that out.
Yes. It's getting punchy. Um, we disrupted the cycle last year because they wanted two and we said, no, you can only have one.
Okay, alright.
On top of everything else. So.
Let's, let's keep moving.
Yeah.
Uh, so the next item up is tasers. Um, so requesting the capital expense for tasers to replace all the tasers we currently have. The, the current model that we have is a Taser X two that was, uh, stopped, uh, in two thousand eighteen. And we just sent one of our officers to Taser retraining, recert. And the two thousand eighteen model of the Taser X two will no longer be supported December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. So, um, and by no longer being supported means they won't give cartridges, batteries. So essentially that Taser is at its end of life cycle.
You have a year of that one?
That's for fourteen thousand for total replacement.
I mean, I had to put too fine a point on it, but couldn't we buy that next year?
Um, we could, I mean, essentially, I think, uh, we'd be running into waiting for the, the budget cycle if, if we run out of cartridges and batteries. I would just, I just wouldn't want to be in a situation where they stop supporting it completely and we, we can no longer use them.
Do you think they'll actually stop supporting accessories before the December twenty twenty-five date?
Not, right now, that's the answer we got.
Buy the additional, um, more of the parts you need now in anticipation of.
We could have sta, attempt to stockpile if that's where you're.
I mean, I just don't know, obviously, I don't know how the money plays, you know, uh, plays out if you did it that way and waited then to.
Well, interestingly.
Throwing good money after, bad though, just, just to wait a year, it's fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're forty.
If we're spending three thousand to not have to spend fourteen thousand, that we know we're going to be throwing away next year anyway. You know what I'm saying?
Does Taser have a monopoly? Is it the only thing out there?
No, I'm asking.
Axon, uh, is the company that.
Are they the only manufacturer of a?
They're the, yeah, they're the largest one. Um, there has been smaller ones that have popped up along the way, but, um, through my experience, Axon is just, in regards to training, like they put the training on the certifications. Um, so everything's compliant through them reliability standpoint. It's, it's the best one to go with.
And how many actual tasers do we want to have in, in the department?
So currently, uh, we'll have seven.
Does every officer on duty get to have a taser?
Uh, patrol officer, yes.
Patrol officer, yeah.
It sounds like if it's, it's seven, do they share them or they, they get one and they?
No, it has to be assigned to them for training purposes and.
And I'm sure you have the date on this, how often, just how often does an officer actually have to use a taser here in Carlisle?
I don't have the exact, uh, data on that, but I would, you know, it's, it's, it's also used as a de-escalation tool. So if you're dealing with somebody who's starting to become violent and the taser comes out, sometimes that corrects the behavior just without deploying it and it gets put back in. So it's, it's definitely a good de-escalation tool as well as.
It's much better than the alternative.
Correct. Yes. Gives the, gives the officer another step in their tool belt to try to de-escalate a situation.
But if you had to take a guess, I, I'm, people will ask me, ask that question about our police department.
I could get that number for you.
Given how safe it is.
It's reportable in the duty report.
Yes, yeah.
Even just took it out.
Yes, it's a use of force.
What would you guess?
I, I can't give, I can't give an estimate on it.
Oh, okay. Alright.
So with the UPS, that's bigger money.
So the UPS, uh, I did have the dispatch communication supervisor here, but he unfortunately had to leave. Um, so this was brought to his intention. This was, um, from the communication center. So what the UPS, UPS system, which is uninterrupted power supply, its end of life uh, is now, so they're no longer supporting it. And what that essentially does is if there is a cut in power, which we've seen before, before the generator kicks on, the UPS power supply actually holds the power and allows up for a two-hour.
It's a big battery.
It's a big battery essentially, yes. And if the generator outsides, outside fails, that, that battery still holds that power to, if we need to send our dispatches to another location where there's power or whatnot during a storm. Um, essentially this keeps everything going, prevents things from rebooting the phones and all that as things click on as well. So, um.
Most importantly, it conditions the power. So when that generator comes on, it's going to stop the surge from this imaging equipment. I have a question about that and actually the radio replacement. Was that not replaced when we did the safety power communications project?
So.
And is, and, and on the UPS, is the hardware end of life or is just the battery end of life?
I believe the hardware is end of life, um, from what Kirk has reported to me, but the, um, it was replaced last in twenty thirteen. I'm not sure when the.
Okay.
It's magically at the end of its warranty.
Well, it's, you know, like food.
And that radio was not part of that communications trip? Cause that was just like.
When was that, the radio?
Years ago. We replaced, I think, point eight million dollars or something like that.
Yeah, and I don't think that had to do with this.
Thought we replaced all the radios as part of that project.
So the ra, the radios on the, the future part of the capital plan is, is a placeholder that, that we need to discuss during the next round of capital planning. So you're right to question it. It's, it needs to be vetted.
Okay. But that UPS, I guess, was not part of it because it's twenty thirteen. Yeah.
I, I had thought that originally, but Kirk is, is sure that this is the end of life for that particular piece of equipment.
And for the hardware, not the batteries?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Cause, cause buying batteries is a lot cheaper than buying the hardware.
How can we find that out then?
We will, chief will take that as a do-out to get back to you.
Yeah, I wish, I, I wish you, he was here for this purpose.
Alright, I don't want my questions to make it seem like I'm not supportive. I just ask questions.
In the last items, the defibrillators, um, right now we have two that are at end of life. So it'd be replacement of two of those. Um, and then additionally, there's a few that need, uh, battery replacement. So that's the.
What's the life of those guys?
About ten years. And they're priced right now at three thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
I keep getting these emails from AED or whatever it is, you know, big sale and.
They know, they, they read our reports. The, um, Chief Soros went for a, a grant for these for defibrillators, not just for police, but townwide, and we were not successful because of the competitiveness of the, the grant process. So they're, they're just not giving out a lot of defibrillator grants, although they used to. That can be cyclical, but, um, we are looking at alternate funding and, and not being successful right now.
Okay. So these are in the back of all the cruisers?
Back of all the cruisers, the front lobby, um, so.
They use them a lot.
They use them on medicals, yeah.
But the EMTs have them too in there.
The EMTs do have them.
The police are there first, right?
Correct.
I think, I think I want you to be there.
I should have said correct. A little more determined.
Alright, okay.
Any other questions for the chief?
I have one question. I noticed it with your new recruit, the, the patch, the, why is the flag backwards on the arm patch on your right arm?
So that's just an old tradition of the flags always moving forward, retreating.
That's why it's on the airplane that way too?
Yes.
Okay.
And I did leave the capital request of Girl Scout cookies off. That one would have been too expensive for my.
Your taste?
For my taste. I, I wouldn't be able to tell you because they're usually gone in a couple of seconds.
Okay, these are they.
Thank you very much.
See, you shouldn't be leaving without pitching the plunge on Thursday afternoon.
I, well, since you brought it up, the polar plunge is, uh, Thursday afternoon at the plaza at the school at three fifteen. It's a police partnership with Special Olympics to help increase awareness and inclusion for that, uh, organization. So we have a couple of teams with, in town that set up for some fundraising. So, um, if anybody's willing to take the plunge into a cold water tank, uh, Special Olympics is bringing it. They're going to park it. The fire department's going to fill it up. Um, so you're more than welcome to join us. Be nice to.
This week?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Come and watch.
I was going to say, you don't have to plunge if you don't want to, no question.
Also donate, you know, you don't have to.
Yeah, you can donate without plunging. There's been those questions too, so. Not that I, not that I, um, you know, publicly recommend peer pressuring, but if you have anybody that wants to jump into cold water, please tell them to do so. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Those people I tell, go jump in the lake.
So Warren's still here as well for the bog house.
Okay, Warren, we've, we're going to continue, guys. Okay, we have to continue and Warren is here for the bog house discussion.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I'm, I'm Warren Lyman with the Land Stewardship Committee here at the request of the Conservation Commission to support and they request some repair funds for the hundred and twenty-year-old Cranberry Bog House, which has not seen any repair efforts of any kind, except the addition of a well in the last ten years. Uh, for the last couple of years, I've gone out there with others to try and see what repairs were needed. And I think it's time now to start taking care of some of them. Most of these repairs, not all, the most are on the inside of the building. The project that we undertook ten years ago for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with CPC money, took care of major structural issues and the building envelope, meaning the roof, the shingles, uh, and sealing up the stonework to keep water from going into the basement. So that was mostly what that hundred and sixty thousand did in two, up through two thousand, um, thirteen. The things I see now are mostly on the inside and I think it's time to start working. I sent out a table which gave my own rough estimate of the cost of those things. They are my estimates. My plan is to go with one or two or three other people who are qualified to better estimate the amount of repair is needed. We have one new person on our land stewards who has building maintenance experience and he's also happens to be a marine vet. He's very competent. Uh, and we would go through and detail the repairs more precisely and then go out and ask for contractor quotes. So the si- situation as I see it is that if you see fit to give us some funding at the next annual town meeting, we would use that money to the best of our ability for as many of the items on this list as we could. But likely, uh, it wouldn't cover everything because I'm not a good estimator. If you waited until a year from now, the following annual spring town meeting, we would have more detailed estimates, but, but very likely, like everything else, the longer you wait, the more expensive things get. So I'd be glad to answer questions about individual items on the list, but I think the bigger question is, do you want to give us something at this current town meeting, which would allow us to start some other repairs in summer or late summer this year? Or because of the fact that we don't have accurate estimates, uh, wait and fund us at a future town meeting? So let me stop now and ask if there are questions.
David, you want?
Yeah, I mean, just to step back because we've had a lot of talk about the bog houses. There's the overall strategic intention to get it livable and make it fireman, fire fighter housing.
Workforce housing.
Workforce housing. So, so there's value in making it livable, right? We, we've agreed that.
Not necessarily, because, um, it, whatever we need to do to make it livable, we'd have to rip out everything they do to just kind of make it, you know, better for the current residents. Then we have abandoned costs and, and.
Is the current, well, that's, I guess, the follow, corollary question. Are we making it better for the current resident or is the current resident going?
Who are the current residents?
Isn't Duffy's son or something like that?
Son.
Yeah. Uh, I, I answered, my answer is that this is not focused on the apartments. In fact, there, there's some things that I've recommended that would help the current residents, but that wasn't our focus. There's things like windows outside of the apartments and window sills and shingles on the outside and the, uh, the west-facing, uh, two-story, uh, exterior staircase. So no, this, this is our assessment of what's on this list is really based on the whole building and had no focus on the needs or the amenities for the tenants. Um, and the, for the couple, few things that are there, I think some of them should stay anywhere irrespective of what future uh, rehab work might go on in those apartments. For example, the exhaust fans for the two stoves could stay in place for any future, uh, apartment renovations. They're just vents which go over the stoves.
Assuming that the stoves are going to be placed on.
I mean, I mean, I'm still, I'm still at my question, Warren. I'm not, I'm not questioning the need for the detail that you provided. I'm saying that before one embarks on these Band-Aids or whatever, step back. What is the plan for the house?
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, my plan is to.
Right now, we, I, we don't know the plan for the house. We are, we are going to, um, have a conversation at some point before town meeting about, right, the, this, uh, using CPA funds to do, to study, do a feasibility study of what is possible with that building in terms of community housing of some sort. Uh, and so if that were to get approved at the Maytown meeting, then, um, that could be done. I don't know how long that would take, but I can't imagine. It would take more than, what, half a year? Yeah, I don't know. But anyway, so we'd have some answers.
Is this Maytown meeting?
Yeah.
That was one of the ward articles that we've talked about?
It's, it's not been specifically described, but yeah, it's, um, it's actually coming through CPA as, um, a, uh, to be funded through the administrative bucket of the CPA. So not a, a particular, um, not one of the other, uh, regular categories because it is a study. And, but we are, we can do a study for housing needs using those administrative funds.
So how much of the cost of the Cranberry Bog or how much of the cost of this is offset by the tenants that are currently there? In either in kind of what they're doing or in rent that we're receiving from them?
No, answering that's above my pay scale, but, um, uh, I think that's what everybody knows needs to be evaluated. In the old days, when there was cranberry farming going on, it was evident. Right now, that all needs to be renegotiated. And I'm not the negotiator, uh, but it is an issue that needs to be renegotiated.
We'll defer to Ryan.
Renegotiating is, it, I don't mean to direct this at Warren, but it's, it's inaccurate. So the, the conscom owns the building and the land. The land is, the conscom does not have the ability to lease or license buildings. So, um, a temporary measure was put into place to allow the building to be licensed, to have something in exchange for in-kind work at the Cranberry Bog. We are actively working to solve that issue with some type of permanent fix. And this is one solution that, that has been discussed and that we're investigating. It ultimately involves transferring the building to the select board for some type of decision.
for some type of decision or, or not. If it's not, then it cannot be used in, um, in an occupancy way. So that would likely involve it falling into disrepair or needing significant capital for it to be automated in some way.
So I'd like to answer the fact of a question about, you know, the long-range goal because my thinking right now puts aside the, the changes that you're thinking about and pretty much says, here's a building, 120 years old, yes, and a barn, yes, but it has a lot of potential uses and it isn't all apartments. Uh, and in the meantime, until the town does decide what it wants to do, we can't just sit down and ignore, uh, other repairs which help keep building in decent shape until perhaps major renovations do take, take place. And just so you know, the other principal uses, which I think you should be looking into besides the apartments is, uh, twofold or threefold. There is tremendous storage pace, space of this building. The basement, uh, can, can, uh, uh, you can have three, four, five vehicles stored in there. The first floor, the floor above the basement has a lot of storage space. Part of that, the, uh, historical society would like to use to put in a little, uh, display about cranberry equipment and the cranberry, uh, farming history. Uh, there's a tremendously large attic which has, uh, a lot of storage space. So storage space apartments, a little historical, uh, project, uh, presentation. That's all in addition, and I'd like to keep the building ready for whatever use, uh, the town wants in the future. And I don't want to just let it sit and not go another 10 years without any maintenance at all.
Yeah, my, my feeling on this is, um, that uh, I think we want to keep the building, um, structurally sound um, and safe, uh, as long as we have anyone using it. Um, but that we should hold off on spending additional money on repairs, e- even if they would be warranted, if one were just to look at the condition they're in. I think we should hold off on, um, additional repairs, um, to see whether, uh, we're actually going to, to have money to fund this study. And if that fails at town meeting, then, um, I could see going ahead and doing these, the rest of the, the repairs, it made sense to just keep it, you know, to do some of this upkeep that you're talking about, Warren. Um, but I guess, and again, I know $20,000 is not a huge amount of money when you think about what we could be spending on, on, uh, you know, a new, uh, one-ton truck or whatever. But, uh, I, 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 I would hate to, you know, put in new windows, redo the, um, the, you know, the tiles, uh, on the outside only to then, you know, two years from now, have a project where all of that's going to be changed. Uh, because we have a, we know we have a usage for the building that's going to require, you know, significant renovation.
Yeah.
So therefore we would have, you know, spent the money when, uh, we won't get any real value from it down the road. And I, I know that's a hard call, but.
Are there any, um, Warren, any of these are, because I know you said fire department requests on the outlets and so forth. There any that are actually safety concerns that we'd have to get done, like?
I would, I would say, you know, patching the holes in the ceilings because if there were to be a fire in their kitchen, you wouldn't want it to go vroom, you know, right up to the attic. And checking the fire extinguishers, um, I think those are two that regardless of what the use of the building is, would not be an abandoned expense because that would be total safety.
Yep.
I guess I would say it, it's, uh, you know, you know, Barney, if, if we wait till the study, then we're waiting until next fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
If we look at this list, Warren has identified about $9,000 worth of this as being high priority. I would propose we say you've got 10.
Mm-hmm.
And focus on the things that are really going to make a difference for preserving the house.
Right, right.
And focus on safety things and get as far as you can. But, you know.
I agree with that.
He's done a lot of work on this and, um, uh, you know, get something going so that we're, at least it's not continuing to deteriorate.
Um, yeah.
But then we really need to talk about the use of the building and the people that are there now and what we're getting and things like that.
Right.
Many Highland. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we don't want it to become a Highland. Yes, currently used, yeah.
So that's what I would say.
I'm comfortable with that proposal.
Warren, does that sound?
Yes, yes, it does. Uh, I, I probably would have suggested myself, but I wanted to put the whole list in front of you. But I think that's true. That would include also the first item one, which is a fire department request. And that's been probably the biggest pain in the neck, uh, because of the nature of the cooking that goes on in there, which has caused a number of false positive, uh, um, fire alarms, uh, not to mention, uh, the response, uh, that's required. And the fire department believes that, that it's a hassle for them and everybody else not to have the vents. And I think those vents are at least a requirement in modern houses because, but I think this, the bog house is probably exempt.
Warren, you probably said it already, but who's going to oversee and manage this once i- if this was to go forward?
Okay, well, I'm raising my hand, I'm just to give you the explanation. It was, uh, Debbie Geltner, who's also still on the land stewardship committee, and I, who with a terrific committee, uh, 12 years ago, did the $160,000, uh, preservation of the bog house all by ourselves. But luckily we had, and, and some of these people are still available, terrific help. We had Tim Goddard help us with the legal and financial problems. We had Larry, Larry Sorley, a historic preservation architect, write all the specifications for us, except structural specifications, which were done, look, by Alan Ankers, a structural engineer. And the former fire chief wrote the specs for the communicating fire alarm system. And Debbie Geltner and I and all of the committee members checked every single piece of material that came on site and checked all the work the contractor did and checked all the invoices. So we did it ourself. I think had it not been for the people like Larry Sorley and, uh, Alan Ankers and Tim, uh, and Chief Flannery, we would have had to hire an external architect, but we didn't and we, I think we did a good job.
So you're saying, Warren, that you would, um, be the sort of project manager on, on, uh, the repairs?
I think me along with one or two others in the land stewardship, uh, committee, including this Shane Usher, the, I told you, the marine vet who has building maintenance experience.
And has this, um, project been brought to the MFC? Because the MFC has, um, uh, done some work, for instance, with the fire, uh, alarm system. They got that rewired, reradioed or whatever.
The answer is, is they know about the needed repairs. And, uh, quite honestly, I've not heard from them. So I decided to push it myself. They, they, they've been copied on these other lists of needed repairs and they were in on a couple of, one or more of the tours. Um, and that's, I, I think they need to speak for themselves about the rest of that question.
I think until I heard from the MFC, I'd be kind of loath to make any decisions. I'd like to know why, you know, what the holdup is, what the concerns are, if any.
I mean, why wouldn't this be lodged, come through the MFC?
Yes.
Yeah.
The MFC has a meeting this Thursday, so I will make a point of, yeah, luckily we're not deciding now.
Yeah.
And, and it will not hurt my feelings at all if MFC decides they would like to take this project forward. I'm sure they have a lot more expertise than I do or other members of the land stewardship committee.
Well, we thank you though, uh, Warren, for doing the work of coming up with this list and also for your willingness to, you know, volunteer to make it happen.
Yep. All right.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Almost an hour behind schedule. Um.
With the, the budget section, um, there are a few other Warren articles left that we'll bring, uh, we'll bring the experts in to talk to you about. However, um, last year, one of the comments the board made to me when we were talking about this process was that you had wanted more time to investigate some of the Warren articles and to make sure that you were able to feel comfortable with your recommendations, which, which will have to happen in April. You have a couple of meetings left before then. So if, if, if you could send Kate and I and Travis just your, hey, I'd like to talk about this more from, from what we saw tonight or not, then that will help shape and make sure you have all of the time you need to.
That's the tonight list, but other things on the list we didn't cover also?
They'll, the rest will be coming before you on the 12th.
So we don't need to cover.
That would be the CPC, that would include the CPC articles and the GIS proposal and things like that.
Yeah, we'll push that, GIS.
GIS, we're not doing tonight.
No.
Okay.
We just saw it.
And didn't we get, no, we have the, wasn't that the presentation that we heard?
Yes.
Um, a couple of weeks, so we've already gotten quite a bit of information about.
You asked some questions and, and Julie's prepared some documents that we'll send to you for the next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we'll definitely get more info because I'm mostly, I'm mostly interested in the, well, I'm not mostly interested, but I'm also interested in hearing more about the CPC articles. So that will be next time too. Okay.
Yeah.
And valid questions, can that be pushed to the next meeting?
So that really is, um, just continuing to, to remind you that if you want to dead exclude your, you have to with your police station, I think. Um, but the fire truck, which I think is a yes, I just want to confirm it, um, that you want to exclude all large debt so that you have some options and some voice in the community. That's just a Warren article. And then a ballot question on the local election, the annual election.
So are we saying we're going to postpone that or do that now?
Uh, postpone it. So you'd have to say you want to do the fire truck and then you want to exclude the debt.
Yeah, you need to think about, do you think we should do this?
Right, okay.
The debt exclusion.
Unfortunately mechanically, putting it on the ballot would be before probably you make a recommendation on the fire truck. So just something to continue to consider. Unless you're ready now.
Let's wait.
CPC will be pushed.
I mean, I could do a quick update if you want on just.
No, I'd rather.
Wait, okay. Did, did, um, Brian, did this, um, you said you, in the back and forth you and I had today, you updated this. Yeah, this is the, um, list of warrant articles for the 24 annual town meeting that included the CPA requests. That might be helpful to have updated, it goes to people ahead of time before the next, before we have the conversation at the next meeting.
Yes. Just the whole board, the, the CPC is working through a lot of these recommendations and uh, presentate, the presentators, I don't know, whatever word works there. The presenters are changing or morphing their opinions on, on how it should go as well. So it, it's not that it's, it's just not ready for you yet because it's just not done. But, um, the Warren article list has everything that is being considered on it. It's just whether they're in their final stage or not, like the Fifth Street Dyke, for example, is pushed. So there's things in the rec splash pad, things have come out.
Pressed, in other words, pressed the presentators.
I do think it's good though for, for all these warrant articles that as we're going along, we kind of know what's happening in the select board. It's like, it, it doesn't work if it's not a unanimous thing as much. And so it's just good to always be informed as to what's going on and get feedback so that we don't get at the end and say, no, we don't support that as a CPC or CPA article.
To that end, I just want to ask quickly while we're on it, um, for the MFC, because I'll be at that meeting, what would you like to hear regarding the bog house? Do you want them to review the proposal? What, what would the select board?
Uh, do they want? My, my, my questions have nothing to do with the $10,000. So I don't think there's anything for me for the MFC.
Well, I guess my question is, if, uh, why did you not re, uh, respond to these people? Uh, do you have some reasons, you know, and concerns that you, that we should know about?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's my question.
Yeah, I thought you were asking about like the particular work you had.
I didn't know if you wanted information on the work or what it was, but, okay.
Well.
I mean, I like, I like Nathan's plan, right? Let's, let's patch up what we got to do and let's do. I think for the MFC at the moment, right? Isn't it?
Unless, unless they do the work. Unless they say, oh, well, we'll go ahead and, and manage that and Warren doesn't have to.
The $10,000, right, oh yeah, but beyond the $10,000, that's a bigger question than MFC, right? Okay.
Yeah, well, one of the, the things in the MFC charter is to prioritize the number of, of, of maintenance items on our municipal buildings.
Right.
Bog is one, and I'd like to know where it is in their list of priorities.
But, but, but Kate, I think the bigger picture on that, I mean, if you were to say town hall versus the school or fire state, I mean, those buildings exist, have a purpose, so their rack and stack is very important. This is, we don't even yet really understand. It's like if they suddenly said we need to, uh, condition Highland, we need to fix, you know, the door at Highland. You're like, well, what are we fixing it for, right? I mean, there's certain buildings that we have not established the strategic purpose and this is one of them.
Which is why I'm also concerned about spending money on it because we don't.
Right, so that's why I like, I like the idea of fix, make it safe, so it doesn't burn down or whatever. And, but we have to tackle it and decide what to do with it, right?
Can I just add a nerdy detail? So the, the bog house is not your building, it is the conscom's building.
But it is a town building.
It is, so you have funding purview, but.
Okay.
It's a little different than Highland because Highland is your building.
Great.
Bog house is, so it's more complicated.
Can we trade it? Can we trade them?
Housing Trust has offered to help transfer the bog house to the town.
All right, okay. Let's, we're getting, we're sort of, uh.
Get your.
Yeah, I think I, I can discuss it. See what we come out. On this discussion, I mean, I just, I have some concerns actually even about shoring it up. I, I, because we don't know what we're going to do with it yet, so.
Right. Okay. Are we ready to move on to our 8:45 agenda item? Uh, which Cemetery Task Force and Safety Committee? This should be fairly, hopefully short because everybody has seen this in their last packet. They've seen it again in this packet. We have discussed it at our last meeting. And it would be nice to be able to unleash these committees.
Yeah, listen to me. Um, it's under the committee charges, right? Okay. So what would you like to go through each, just see if anybody has any suggestions about either the charges?
Sure, we can start with that. I think the Cemetery Task Force one is fairly simple.
There is a, there is a section, I, again, I, I, I think this is a good thing to set up. I did see though, the, um, where was, there was a piece there where it says, um,
There's one typo.
Expanding it, um, where, what was it? Uh, maybe I'm.
Talking about the Cemetery Task Force?
I thought I was, but I, I thought I read this and there was an area where it said they could also take on. Oh, maybe that's under the, um, Safety Committee, never mind, my apologies.
Did you say there was a typo, David?
Well, we say we're renaming it from pedestrian safety to safety.
We're talking Cemetery Task Force.
Oh, no, that was where the typo was, sorry, in the, in the, in the safety.
Let's talk about Cemetery Task Force. Does anybody have any issues with that one? Can I have a motion, please? To approve, to, uh, adopt.
I, yeah, I move that we adopt the Cemetery Task Force charge as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent job, guys. No nays. It was unanimous. All right, so Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Committee.
I just wanted to point out there, we, I would change at the end. We have, uh, some committee of, the subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen. Change that to Select Board, there's a typo.
And the, and it's, and. And the, and it's, and Traffic and Pedestrian, that's what I was in, struck.
Yeah.
Page two of the charge.
That's what it says. They've crossed out Board of Selectmen and they've changed it. I am on the second page.
First paragraph of second page.
Got it. I'm on it.
Oh, sorry, the first paragraph. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Here, oh, here it is. The Select Board could consider adding to this committee's scope workplace and town safety, offering recommendations, training and research grant opportunities. I'm not sure. What, what was your, is this, was this your suggestion, Ryan, or did we suggest this? I don't remember it.
Read it again.
Well, it's.
The italicized.
First paragraph and where it says, the italicized one, that the Select Board could consider adding to this committee's scope, workplace and town safety, offering recommendations, training and researched grant opportunities.
Yes, so right now, I, I am who you would go to for, for workplace safety and other concerns, but they end up being budget priorities and and other things that need to be be discussed and vetted. So there are times when people bring this to me and I don't, besides approving it, I don't really know where it should go. So having a committee that does safety in general in the town, whether it be traffic, whether it be walking, whether it be workplace safety would, would be a a full charge without creating like two or three committees is is kind of my thought process there.
Yeah, so my, my comment, because my comment about this was a concern about it just being safety because it's awful broad, but that's actually what you want it to be.
Yeah.
Okay, then I take away my concern.
Yeah, an example, I think, is if someone says we need to add a new sign for safety in town, you know, right now it comes to you or, and so rather than doing that, it goes to this committee. Committee reviews it and then.
Gives a recommendation to you.
Gives a recommendation to us.
But that's not workplace safety, right? I mean, I was thinking workplace safety, somebody says the, the, you know, the, the stairs coming up to the second floor are not safe, you know, and.
Well, it could be making sure everybody knows the proper degress to the building in the event of it.
Uh huh.
You know, or.
So when, David and I visited the wastewater treatment plant, we had to get on top to see the RTU. And the way they get on top is put a ladder up against the building. And it was not my favorite moment as town administrator here. David was very nimble, I was not. So the Stephen suggested that we add a ladder to the building, that we actually put a ladder on it. Would be great work for, I mean, I know it's a simple example and we could just do it, but the, a great for a subcommittee to review that type of thing and add it to the priorities as a recommendation to the Select Board. So you guys can't go see and look at everything? It would be good to have a committee that could. The MFC could also take this on, but they have such a big charge and job that it's, it's just a little bit different workplace safety than building maintenance.
Hmm, that does seem like it's asking a committee of volunteers to learn, you know.
Well, they could do walkthroughs. I mean, it's, I don't know, let them decide what they prioritize, right? I mean, we don't have that many buildings. I think walkthroughs of people who are interested in safety would join this committee. There's certain people who like that stuff, right?
It just seems like it might be a more of a DP, I mean, a town maintenance, you know, if you thought something wasn't safe, that was.
But what are they doing on traffic and pedestrian?
Well, no, that, I, well, I'm just.
I mean, how's it different?
Well, it's because, so for instance, people that are interested in trying to do a pathway on certain parts of town or people that want to try to figure out a way to make it easier for kids to walk to school or to ride their bike.
Sure, but I mean, you're parsing it in a way that.
No, because.
But I don't know, it's different.
Well, I don't.
I mean, I don't know that it's different. It's just another thing. It's, you maybe there's too much in it and people, but maybe they should, but I think the point is maybe don't preset their agenda. Let them look and decide what they think is a priority.
I think this is something, if I'm getting this right, Ryan, this is something that would be helpful to you, having this broader charge, we think.
I think it would be helpful to you so that you don't have this, this conversation. I don't mean that in a mean way, but that you need a you need a committee to vet these smaller ideas so that they can just bring you something or put it on a capital plan. And, yeah, this is pretty broad, but I, I really don't think we should commit, create two committees. I think it's close enough where I don't think there'd be a lot of work on this side, the safety side, but enough where you'd want some.
Right, I mean, I think, I haven't thought it really through, but in thinking about what you said, you took a tour of the school buildings.
Yeah.
You know, they take a tour of a building once in a while, they kind of look around and they talk, Steve could lead them to, you know, I mean, they can see things and decide what should go on their list, or say, DPW can take care of it or have the custodians take care of it. They don't have to bring it to us, but there's some.
No, it would be that the custodians could bring it or Steve and Kinnearney could bring it to them and just say, hey, I'm going to do these signs or this.
Or I need your help to.
An example that just came up this week, I don't know, in City in the Woods, there was a thing about signage and the the bike, four feet from the bike. And so who, who decides that? Who, who figures that out? You could put that to this committee and say, that's who should, you know, review it and can then come to us with your recommendation.
I mean, right.
Or if a worker were to say to come, I mean, where does a worker come with a grievance, well, grievance is the wrong word, but let's say, you know.
Observation.
An observation that they feel that, you know, something in their office is not safe.
You go to your, to your, you know, your department head and, right, and, I mean, you do, you wouldn't, you deal with it that way to start with. And if you maybe if he didn't get any response. I don't know.
I don't know.
But that's okay. I, I'm fine.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm fine, too.
I'm sorry, I do have one specific thing on this one I wanted to ask about, which is particularly in light of the conversations we've had a couple of different times about sustainability, and particularly what this committee's got a, a particular focus around, you know, the town's walkability and, and, you know, being able to ride your bike more, et cetera, et cetera, whether we should consider recommending that there be at least a member from the representing this environmental sustainability committee. Just, just to embed sort of the looking at things through the lens of sustainability.
What about the Trail Committee then?
You could do them, too. I, I, you know, I don't know if we want to get into that, but again, it just occurred to me since, you know, since we have had the conversation a couple of times about trying to have ESC people sitting on committees, this one in particular has to do with making the town more sustainable, using less fuel powered things to get around, et cetera. So it just seemed like maybe this was a good time to raise that.
Yeah.
I think ESC is going to want to join us anyway. You know, you need to put it codify it and sell it because what if in the future, things change and we want to add, I guess we change the policy.
We've changed, changed the charge. So is that in addition to the five?
Then you'd have to go seven.
Well, no, I think you could leave it five and just say, and the Select Board, you know, we would, whatever, say, be comprised of five, five members, one, one of whom would be a member of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, something like that.
Wanted, okay. So to summarize, well, so I'd like to have some straw poll about the ESC. Yeah, you know, yay or nay?
To add the ESC?
To add the ESC, yay, yay.
That was a very reluctant, was that a yay?
Okay, all right.
So I'm not against it.
All right, so we're adding the ESC. We're changing the name of this to Safety Committee. And rather than this thing in italics, it's, it is actually going to say that the charge is ensuring the safety in Carlisle, or see, the Safety Committee, the mission of the committee will be to bring attention to and work to eliminate unsafe conditions for pedestrians, bicycles, drivers, motorized vehicles of all ages and abilities, as well as workplace and town safety, offering recommendations, training and research grant opportunities.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. I move that the Select Board adopt the Safety Committee charge as presented tonight with the following changes, the title being changed to Safety Committee, so Board of Selectmen being changed to Select Board where it has not been, and the two bullets under the first two paragraphs are combined in the second bullet being incorporated into the overall charge.
And.
And the.
And the.
And adding the Environmental Sustainability Committee as a member, as a named member of the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I saw that face. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Another one down. Select Board and Town Administrator Goal Review. I think we should do this.
Yeah.
I think it's good for us.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry we're running so late, but we've got a lot of good done, work done tonight, so at least there's that.
So we're going to do the goal review.
Review. Well, it's going to be very fast because
we've accomplished more.
What are we going to look at of the three things in the packet? Are we looking at the SB goals or the Town Administrator?
Both of them.
Okay, starting with.
Let's start with us.
Okay.
So I think a lot of these we could check off, you know, we've, we've made a lot of progress on, mostly because the guy at the end of the table here, you know, it's like the nut at the end of the tiller. Create and, and sailing, you know, we always say it's not.
He just called you a nut.
A nut. We say it's, it's it's not the sailor, the nut at the end of the tiller that makes the boat go. But anyway, what can I say?
Thanks, Kate.
You're welcome.
We always knew you were in that.
Create and present a comprehensive capital plan. I think we are well on our way. We've done capital capacity estimates for five years, long-term facilities, maintenance strategy. I don't know if we are as far along on that as other, and I was, again, I'm saying the royal we because, you know, really it's the MFC and Ryan who are working on that. Do you want to actually comment on that? Are we making progress on that?
Yes.
Okay, so there. We're certainly continuing integration of Town and School Maintenance Department for the continued efforts towards updating town buildings. We've evaluated and rearranged a lot of the town spaces and we're continuing that project. Prioritize building plans. What did we really mean by that? I guess that was the.
Doing that, leasing fire.
Leasing fire, leasing fire. We're making progress. We're going to have hopefully something on the warrant. And tour, you know, that's one thing we have not done. We have not toured all of the public facilities. We've said we were going to take a a field trip, but we could wait until spring, until it's a little warmer and nicer to do that. Bring boots. So I think, you know, that's, that's good for financial sustainability. We are making progress. Environmental stewardship. We certainly have supported the staff and staffed the the ESC. We now have a new person there working for that. We're working, when we'll be discussing for later in our next meeting, the, the green community status and what we want to do with that. I think the ESC is working on the EV transition plan, but we haven't seen it yet. Investigating the sustainability partnerships with the school to include a student ESC member. I don't know where they're, they're at.
That's not really, yeah.
Or the local farm resources. Okay, that's an ESC job. Gathering the data necessary to create a townwide carbon reduction plan. I'm not sure whether, if they're working on that or not. Do you know?
I, I think that we're going to hear about the Climate Leader proposal that ESC is working on that they want to bring to the Select Board to suggest we, we be, we submit the town as a potentially to be designated as a climate leader, and that includes something around being able to measure good, set up a carbon reduction plan. So I think we're going to hear about that.
That was part of maintaining the green community status.
Well, they're two different things. This climate leader is a, is a relatively new program that the states developed and it's actually really exciting. So I think we'll, it'll be interesting to hear about it.
Okay.
I'd like to just ask a kind of a process question. I, I, I'm wondering, you know, I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, but we're flying through this and we're not really learning anything. Like, it would seem to me like we should be taking the time to go through them and saying, okay, well, how are we going to meet this goal? And, and really give it its due time, rather than when we're an hour behind just trying to fly through the goals. I don't think, I think, I think all we're doing by doing this right now, with all due respect, is checking a box.
I agree.
Not really learning from the process. We have people watching and, and there's, there's, I'm not seeing a value in what we're doing.
Right now. Well, I think it's informing what questions we're going to want to ask environmentally, the ESC, when they come and present to us.
We can do that. I mean, you can just say that and we'll do that on our own.
Yeah, see this and you start to think, are we, are we thinking about this? We haven't even talked about this.
But I mean, I don't think, I don't think Nathan's objecting to that. He's just saying it.
I'm not objecting. You're going through this.
The strategically important thing is getting the best.
Saying exactly.
Maybe we're.
We're not giving this enough time right now. We're not, we don't have the energy to really do this and make sure that.
To do it right.
We know what the next steps are and things like that. I do think we should be doing.
We should do it. We should just make it fresh on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, okay. Well, so what do you want to do?
Well, I'm just going to suggest if we decide not to discuss it tonight, I think it would behoove us to put it earlier on the agenda because this is the kind of topic, because it's not pressing, we put it off if we get to this point in a meeting.
Yeah.
So if we want to give it real.
Things is, we are going to have the ESC here.
When are they coming?
I would, I think it's really important that we remind them of these goals and that, you know, as we've gone through a lot of things and we've seen that a lot of the goals have actually already been met or we have substantial progress. And that this is, that we want them to focus on this.
So when are they coming?
Nathan, your comment wasn't that it's about the environmental sustainability part. You're talking about the goals altogether.
Thought it all, right?
Well, it's not just.
I understand, but how do we know?
When do they come? Well, when are they coming?
I think it's our next meeting.
Well, they asked for the March, we just.
March 12th, March 12th, okay.
Is that the next?
But I think it's, yeah, that's our next meeting.
They'll, you, you know, you should give them a heads up that it's not just this climate leader plan. But that's why they want to come.
Well, shouldn't, I mean, I thought it was sort of a standing thing with us now, that when a committee comes to us, we review the charter, we review their goals.
Well, we haven't been doing that.
Yes.
Well, we should, and let's start with ESC.
And, and one of the reasons also to go through these is some other things that we haven't done. For instance, we wanted to meet with other committees. I don't think we've done that much. We've had the ones that have Warren articles, but we haven't really done systematically. We've seen ESC a lot because they asked to come a lot, but we haven't. And that's, and sometimes doesn't give us enough time to see the other ones.
Either need to decide, you know, okay, we're going to spend the 30 to 45 minutes going through this tonight. Or we're going to spend that 30 to 45 minutes going through it another night.
Right.
Well, it has to be sooner rather than later.
I think it has, we have to give it the time it's due.
No, we do, and I totally agree with you. And I just want to say that this happens every year. In the run up to spring town meeting in particular, there's a lot to do. And we're, you know, we're lucky that because Ryan's as good as he is and he's hired good people, we have sort of less of a body and offender work, but there's still a lot to do. So I don't want to be too hard on ourselves right now in this window where we got to get that stuff done to cram everything else in. I mean, you know, yes, we should do it annually, but all of us are on three-year cycles and most of our three-year cycles are not over this June. So we're, I think we should view our committee assignment as a continuum. And I'm fine, and I always advocate that the summer is the best time to tackle those or post-town meeting.
Yeah, but you have to keep track of whether you're making.
But then honestly, not on care, you've got.
Next June, you haven't done any of them.
You can't cram four hours of stuff into a three-hour meeting. It's also unfair to people who, you know, we all get up and we go to work every day. And it's, it's 11, you know, I mean, I'm just saying there's an, it's not yet, but it will be when we get home. No, but it will be. And I say, I totally agree with what Nathan's saying. It deserves.
Put it, well.
If we need more meetings, like every week, then that's what we should.
Might need some more meetings.
That's okay.
Especially in the run up to town meeting.
I mean, I'm going to four this week, right? So I'll go.
I mean, look, we've all been to last night's meeting already.
Right.
And some of us were.
And by the way, that was a very good, that was a very good meeting that we all attended.
Right.
That's right in our strategic objectives, right?
It is.
So, okay.
So we should be able, that's.
Right, so let's pat ourselves on the back and let's move on to the TA report or something.
Do you want to look at the TAs? Sure, he's. No.
I would like to get at the time.
Pardon? Pardon?
I would like to give it the time.
Fine, let's do it.
TA report.
No, he
No, no, oh, I'm sorry. Must not do it tonight.
Yeah, I think we just, we've agreed on that. We're gonna
Fine, we're gonna go, well, let me see. Policy approvals. Number eight. Broaden reconciliation and RPP.
So the, the three policies before you, one is reconciliations is one of our financial policies and then passing a preventing fraud, waste and abuse policy, which is also part of the financial policy package. And then the third policy is the revamped buy recycle policy, which I will give a tremendous amount of credit to Gretchen to. When she put this together, and this isn't the first time you've seen it, but she vetted a lot of the comparable communities, put a lot of thought into this, talked to a few different boards in order to make sure that it was, is Carlisle, but also effective. So the one we were sending out was from, I think when I was in high school. And we were sending it out in order to get a point for recycling and Gretchen and I just didn't think that was, that was correct. So we tried to make it something we would actually do.
Did you get any input from ESC?
Not on this one, no.
I'd like to move that we accept the reconciliations policy as presented in the packet or amended tonight. Also move to accept the fraud, waste and abuse policy as presented in the package or amended at tonight. And move to accept the buy recycled, recycled procurement policy as presented in the packet or amended tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just wanted to mention in the reconciliation policy, the last line says effective date, this policy was adopted January.
I will. That's when we first brought it to you.
Okay.
And I have a quick question on the recycled policy, because I see that some of these require staff to do some reporting. Is, is this something that has been ongoing or is this sort of a new, something new that would be asked of staff? And then Ryan, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk it over with, with a staff heads meeting or whatever, just interested in whether the staff are on board with all of this.
It was in our last policy. I don't know.
No, I know. I'm asking
Ever was done.
Why I'm asking, you know, if it's been done or if folks know that we will now be expecting this to be done. That's all. I, I think it's a great policy. I just if we're gonna have it, we probably should be following it.
They will.
They will?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we've had a motion. We've had a second. Any further discussion?
I see the section you're talking about. I'm sorry. So that is optional, that section. So that's if you want to adopt it.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you that. So, I mean, if we're adopting the policy, are we adopting the optional too or what?
This is on the return
The very end of that
Buy recycle
Yeah.
Back to the
It says the heading is optional for Carlisle, the last page and a little bit of the previous page. Well, it says each department shall report purchases of recycled products to the Town Administrator on July 30th for the previous fiscal year.
So we think you should adopt this policy. I, I would recommend not, not debating it tonight, but really deciding with this policy if you're going to enjoy this section and in comment on it before we get here.
Right, I mean, there's a, well, two items come to, so there's the optional whether, I mean, if we adopt it, it's the policy. If it's optional, it's not necessarily the policy. And then the, the highlighted second bullet or third bullet, where the chief procurement officer will apply standard of 10%, which I don't I don't, you know, I think that's a good idea, but it's, it's actually the first time I've seen setting a percentage that sort of weights the value of, you know, an environmentally preferable thing. Like, we've talked a little bit about, I remember talking to Eric Adams when we were talking about the housing code to get a ballpark figure for, you know, whichever green standard of house, I can't remember which one, but how much more that would cost. And he kind of hemmed and hawed, but then he came up with 20%. So, I mean, it's an interesting point that probably needs a little more attention. So to your, to your point, maybe we should table this one and think about it.
We can adopt it except for, up to the optional for Carlisle.
Oh, we could do that.
Everything else works.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then we can
So maybe, are we saying we would
eliminate the entire optional for Carlisle or just that second bullet?
Measuring the progress, I think we should talk about it a little bit more for the optional. So if you want to leave the, adopt it without the optional, without the optional, and then let's put it as a thing to
I mean, we could talk to ESC about it, right? That's why I asked you the question. I'm sure they're in favor, obviously. You don't think it's
I, I don't think that would be necessary, but I guess for me, I, I think if we adopt it without the optional, that's great. And then I would just encourage that we figure out a way to have the meaningful conversations with the people that would be trying to do these things, which are the town staff primarily, right? So these practices, we're talking about buying things that are, you know, 30% recyclable, you know, paper products, all of that stuff. You know, if we, that we should then support some training or, you know, staff learning to actually be doing this, right? I mean, that's, I don't, I don't want to adopt a policy just so we can say on the face of it, we have this great policy if we're not really gonna try to do it.
This stuff is extremely difficult to do without teeth.
That's why I'm raising it, is
Well, I don't think the teeth are in the options.
Right now, we have, we have gums, so this would give us some teeth.
Yes, right, so
Not a full set of chompers yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than eliminating the entire optional part, what if we just eliminate the first two bullets? Because the second two seem fairly uncontroversial, right?
Actually, the, the, the third one, for sure, for DPW, really, to me, you know. Mm-hmm. That goes to the DPW.
I'm fine either way. I was just trying to salvage a little bit more of it.
As I said, the first bullet used to be in our original, was in our original policy.
That each department should report their purchase.
There was, there was a reporting requirement. I don't remember who was supposed to report it. I think actually it was the TA that was supposed to report it to us. And never got that reported.
It would be nice to know how much it would cost to adhere to this, like if it's gonna be an increase, you know, and you talked about, well, maybe we need some training. Well, if that's like an additional cost to the town to get training or whatever, just to know those costs, so we know what we're kind of getting into here with these.
So you don't want to pass any, adopt any of this? At this point, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I guess I hadn't really gotten into this and thinking about it and, you know, the more you get into it, you can come up with a lot of questions.
I removed my third motion of accepting the buy recycle, recycle procurement policy.
So maybe we just vote on the first
First two.
First two. And then
Yes, I've amended my motion. You seconded me.
I did, and I'm happy to accept your amendment. I'll second your rescinded
Right over.
Amendment.
Any further discussion of the, on the motion?
The motion is now the two policies.
Just the two policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What are your instructions then to our staff? We're bringing these back, this, this one back. What, what information do you need?
Well, speaking for myself, I would like to hear from the staff about what of these practices that are described here. What do they think? How would they try to implement them? And is there a way to get some sense of the cost it might incur to the town? For instance, to be buying our products that are with a minimum content of 30% post-consumer recycled materials. I don't want to make somebody spend a ton of time figuring that out. Maybe there's a way to, you know, talk to people in other towns that have, that are actually doing this, but it would be useful, I think, to know were, were our staff to be doing this, a, what do they think about that? How much extra time would it take from them? And secondly, would there be some, you know, what would be the additional cost to the town? Just rough ballpark. That would be for me.
I would like to just offer one recommendation, so that one of the reasons why I like working here is because you care what the staff thinks. And so do I. I feel like I'm a pro-staff person. But really, we work for the town, so we should be following the, the, what the town wants to have as its culture and its belief. And one of the things that we keep talking about is being more sustainable. So this is like the lowest of the hanging fruits. So the message that we get is not to worry about things like this. And I think we need to start doing the easy stuff because the big stuff is gonna be really hard if you're truly engaged in sustainability. This should be a no-brainer. And really, any staff member that can't do this really shouldn't be staff. So I wouldn't mind saying that to any of them.
Well, I
Well, I'm totally for it.
Frankly, my concern is that we have this capital chart looking out the next five years, and we have massive capital expenses. And if this gets layered on to that, what is that kind of, so we assume, oh, we're gonna buy, you know, two new trucks and they're gonna be this. But if we start to say, well, actually, those all need to be, you know, a certain type or meet requirements, you know, procuring requirements. How will that affect, will that budget be 30% higher as we project out? And then are we gonna be so far off? And I don't know the answer to that. And I'm saying that that would be something helpful to, because we're talking about putting in policy that is gonna be flow through everything. And, you know, I think we gotta get it right.
I don't know. I don't think this policy asks for doing, you know, exceedingly expensive things. You know, I see, it says, you know, buy Energy Star. It says, you know, get recycled paper products.
It says, sorry, it says, all boards, commissions, committees and other organizations that utilize any municipal building for meetings, events or like
In the options.
Are also be responsible for adherence to this policy. That's requiring every board in Carlisle, at least my reading of it, to adhere to not only this, but, you know, look at, at that. Which is maybe fine, but I think that we
That's in the options. I don't think
We're not there yet.
I think we should talk about the body of it. Forget about the options right now. And you accept the body of it, and I think the body is totally acceptable.
Okay, sorry, I jumped the gun on that a little bit.
And we'll, we'll talk about the options later, but it's better to have a better buy recycled or buy energy efficient policy than have none at this, which is what we have now.
I think also, you know, I don't want to diminish this as a policy, but I think that sometimes, and the reason why I move something so fast, sometimes it's better to get something out there and see what happens because it's a policy. We can change this in the next meeting if we want to. So sometimes it's better to get it out there and get the reaction as people are starting to do it. And if somebody comes in here and says, well, that police cruiser is gonna cost us $200,000 because of the policy, we'll say, no, it's not. And, you know, and, and we can
And it says, for the recycled procurement, it says to the maximum extent practicable.
It's not a, it's not a bylaw. It's just a policy.
Yeah, right.
But, but I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with digging into these things deeper and, and understanding them better.
I've, I've changed my position, so I am fully in support of adopting everything down, except for the optional items.
And then we can talk about the optional items at another thing, but at least we have a policy on the, on the books. That's not poorly antiquated.
And, you know, Ryan's absolutely right. Come on, this is low-hanging fruit. We should, this is, this is what we want to be doing and the message we want to send, so.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Travis. We, we don't really understand the cost to it. It's one of the best, the best ways to learn that. Just to try it and see what happens.
So shall we, shall we pass the other two? Let's, I'll put a motion on the floor then to adopt the environmentally preferable purchasing policy draft as presented in the packet tonight with the exception of the optional for Carlisle section, which would be, should be removed for now.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I'm gonna do roll call.
Roll call.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Fine.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll support this without the option.
Okay. Good. We got that done.
All right.
TA report.
All right, you should go upstairs and see, we got rid of the flat files and we are ready to start finishing the second floor cubicle. So Al patched and painted, it looks great. The lactation room or parental room over here, we're gonna start calling it. So draw the curtains, go in there, see how peaceful it is. It's very nice. Human resource updates. Juniper, who you appointed to your last meeting, starts on the fourth. We're very excited for her to begin. And started up we had started a while ago an onboarding checklist, but we have been meeting with new hires and going over the checklist and having them talk to us about their onboarding experience, and we've learned a lot from that. So we're gonna be doing that at 90, 180 and 365 days in, in people's first years and then during their annual review, should be twice reviewing halfway and then in the annual review. So those are good things. And eventually Aubrey will come back and she will handle a lot of that. An update on her, she should be back working on March 25th. She'll be working remotely for a week to answer emails, because I'm sure her first days are like just showing pictures of Russell to everybody. So I want her to, to get caught up in transition and then come back to the office. So you'll see her at the same time you see me come back from Fort Bliss, or Fort Bill, as I have it in this report. The budget updates, we went through pretty extensively. The Q2 financial report is more for your understanding. I'll be giving it to the finance team finance committee on Thursday. The main items in there that you'll notice, and this happens every year, so I don't think it's alarming, but there's about 80,000 in year-end transfers we need to do to cover some costs. We have the equivalent amount of non-expenditure in the budget, so it's a wash. So I haven't put it as an alarm bell, but we did report individually what each one of those are, so you understand. And we have tried to adjust the FY25 budget recommendations that you've seen to, to cover these changes next year. So maybe one year we'll have it exact. It'll be great. Community outreach, continuing to hold coffee hours at ferns and provide hours outside of town hall. One of my favorite versions of this was going to the library to speak to the preschoolers. And I read a very lengthy book called Trusty Town Hall to them. I made a lot of bad jokes about town government that they did not understand, but they did like, I think, my energy and they were great. Jen's, I'll get to Jen in a second, but she was awesome. I have approved the native plant garden, hopefully without your disdain, but they worked it within the actual budget that we have and the maintenance of it within the budget we use for the native plant garden, so that, that has been approved. We also, I also made sure the garden club was supportive of this measure. And since it's budget neutral, I went ahead and approved this project for the select board. The procurement, so you'll see native plants out front. And it's gonna look great and be a good place for people to learn about native plants here in Carlisle. Procurement updates, sprinkler system is done except for the alarm system, so that is good. The dog park I saw will be ready to go back out for procurement, the smaller version of it. So an update to this update. Cori lighting, we think we have a path forward. More to follow. Greeno Barn, we extended the deadline to March 7th for need of people demonstrating de-camp certification if they're gonna be over $150,000 bid. We do think it still might come in under that, but we wanted to make sure that we had that correct. And then the recreation mowing and fertilizing contracts went out to bid today. Probably don't have time to go over this tonight, but the STAM recently passed their legislative priorities. They match a lot of Carlisle's priorities. I encourage the board to adopt this priority list if they're willing. So far, 26 small towns have adopted it across the Commonwealth.
Can I just stop you? Did everybody read that letter?
This is pretty, pretty good.
Yeah, so can we just do that for them and be done with that? Yeah, so can we just do that for them and be done with that? We don't have to see it again?
I don't think I put it that way, but sure.
You know what I mean, yeah. Okay, so.
Move that the select board endorsed the Small Town Administrators of Massachusetts 2024 legislative priorities as presented in the Town Administrator's Report and authorized a town administrator to communicate the priorities to Carlisle's Legislative Delegation.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, two Rotary sign notifications. The Carlisle Public Schools will be advertising their Play Newsies Junior. And the Scholarship Fund of Concord Carlisle will have their phone-a-thon. So you'll see those out there, just so you know, for the Rotary signs, we have tried to approve two at a time max, so there isn't a congestion of signs.
Quick thing, Ryan, sorry, but just quickly, are we going to put a sign up about the primary being a week from today?
I have formed the town clerk of that.
I noticed that, like, the election dates and like the caucus date and things like that aren't on the town website.
Yeah, in fact, people were asking me today when the caucus was going to be.
The 29th, but.
Oh, is it?
I think so, the 29th of March.
I thought we, did we set that?
No, that is the town clerk.
I believe that that's the date she sent.
Okay, well, she usually comes and informs us of that, doesn't she, usually?
It's not on the website.
All right, well, we know.
None of those dates are on the website, at least they weren't last week.
Okay, note to us, thank you.
All right, upcoming items, the financial auditors will be in to wow you with their presentation at your next meeting. And then I'm going to be at Fort Bliss from March 13th to the 29th. I will still be at the select board meeting on the 26th, I will still be communicating with you. I'm going to be delegating my in-person emergency responsibilities to treasurer collector Sandy Nason. And emergency management is always under Chief Soros, but he will have my duties as well, while I'm gone. So the only reason why I'm delegating anything is because I'm out of state, but I will be in contact. And the school I'm at will allow me to still do a lot of my job. For staff recognition, Jen from the library, again, deserves attention, attention, incredible work for, for work with the town's youth. I had the chance to observe her during, with our preschoolers and found the residents were very engaged. The parents knew who she was, everybody knew a lot about the programming. It's very clear that they go there because of her efforts. So her approach makes a big difference, not just to children's literacy, but also their social approach to the world and readies them for school. So one of the many things that our library does, and we have incredible staff there that do it better than most. Jen is a great example. And then there is a draft agenda for the next meeting, which already has too many things on it for you to review.
Plus, there's only 10 minutes for ESC in there, so you're going to have to, if we're going to do more deeper dive with ESC.
I was, because, yeah, okay, well, that, but that came out of tonight's meeting, that, that was important.
Yep.
So.
You might need to layer in some extra meetings.
And I would hate to do, have to do it, but I think, you know.
Well, I mean, it's legitimate, I mean, I think it's a legitimate discussion point, maybe not tonight. Do people prefer to once in a while have a weekly meeting or a four-hour plus marathon? I mean, that's, that's a point that everybody should.
An extra meeting.
What?
An extra meeting.
I prefer an extra meeting.
I would too.
Okay, so good, we will, but let's wait until.
Do you want a motion on the Leeson Public Library, since they want to put it up tomorrow?
Ah, yes, I'm sorry, that, so that is, I sent it to you and it's here, you want to hold it up? The banner, just late with the request if they want to put this banner on.
Spelling bee, yeah.
I move to approve the request of the Leeson Public Library Board of Trustees to hang a banner over the school, over School Street, and not over the school, over School Street, February 28th through March 5th. Through March 15th, 2024, subject to the fire department schedule, subject to fire department schedule.
Does they have to hang it?
Oh, to advertise the Audit Spelling Bee fundraiser event.
It's an adult spelling.
Oh, advertise the Adult Spelling Bee fundraiser event.
Get audit on the minds, okay.
Second.
Did I say audit?
Yeah, you did.
Be fun for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. It's okay, I've been saying, what was that I was saying instead of schedule? Minutes. I sent in one correction, and I think it's, it's been updated in your packet.
It has been, yep.
And there was.
New motion.
Yes, for the January 23rd and, or February 13th.
Well, I don't see the other one, but I have the motion for, I move to approve the February 13th, 2024 Select Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second. There's two, but there are two minutes in the.
There are two. Okay, so let's vote on that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the other ones was January 23rd.
I move that we approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2024, as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Any comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any liaison reports, liaison, liaison? Nope, okay, I'm, community input, I shudder to ask tonight.
I do, so I'm going to put out the following message unless I'm told not to. So tonight's select board meeting saw non-Carlisle residents virtually attend the public comment session and use extremely hateful and offensive language, spreading disinformation and interrupting all speakers. As always, the select board allowed the attendees to speak for their allotted time. Then the board asked them to stop speaking to allow the meeting to continue. The attendees would not stop disrupting the proceedings and eventually they were placed in the virtual waiting room by the board. I personally believe in the right to free speech, having served in government for most of my professional career and having served in the army where soldiers swear an oath to defend the Constitution. I know Carlisle's town officials share those beliefs. Residents and non-residents have the right to speak and express their opinions, no matter the content, as demanded by the Bill of Rights. However, Carlisle is not a place where hate speech, racist language, and offensive comments meant to spread disinformation and demean others is respected or welcomed. I continue to believe in free speech, and I will continue to defend the right for Americans to express their opinions, so here's mine. The overwhelming majority of people in Carlisle are inspiring, volunteering their time, honoring differences, treating people with respect, and actively working to make the world a better place. I'm proud to work in this town and to live in a country where terrible people are respectfully drowned out by so many examples of good.
This will be posted, where would, where would this go?
Where would this go?
On our town sites.
The question that we were kind of looking at each other at the beginning was, do we have to grant non-residents? Public input, is that a thing?
A person could come, it's no different there than it is here, they could walk in off the street.
But at town meeting, we do not allow non-residents unless.
They can't vote, they can come in.
But they're not allowed to opine, are they, unless invited? So how is that different?
We'd have to allow them to say something like.
How is that different?
Question.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something to bring up, I, I don't debate what you, your statement, but I think we ought to.
So town meeting is not a public meeting, has its own law.
Has its own law, but a public meeting as interpreted in the Commonwealth is what these guys are saying.
Yeah.
So an open meeting is different rules. So town meeting is a legislative body that's governed by specific laws. So you're not allowed to come into town meeting unless you're authorized. So the moderator does that at the beginning of town meeting, allowing people to speak or not and to be there. This is different, this is a public meeting, anybody.
Well, no, as has been pointed out to me many times, this is not a public meeting, this is a meeting of the select board held in public.
So you can't deny anyone the right to be here.
Oh, they can.
May I have an opportunity to speak, Cynthia Stone?
Who is that?
Cynthia.
Cynthia, hi. Hi, I don't know, who's it said, David said that, it is correct. This is a select board meeting, you're allowing people to speak if you so wish, but you're not required to let people speak, is your meeting.
Well, I think, wait, I'm not sure, Cynthia, isn't it if you have a community input section on your agenda, as we did? And any, can you restrict it just to Carlisle residents, I'm not sure you can.
You can shut it down anytime you want.
No, that's not true, right, so you, you can only set a time limit by law.
Because you don't like what they say.
Yeah.
I'm not in.
No, 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 wait a minute, but let's, let's distinguish between not liking what they say.
Right.
And having a non-resident say something.
Right.
That's what I'm, I, I agree with you, you can't, a Carlisle resident can blather on if he or she so desires. But I didn't know whether we would allow non-residents that opportunity, whether we would afford them.
Well, why don't we just check it out?
Wait, I think it's time for another policy, and that could be a community input. I, you know, I said, set a one-minute limit, but maybe, because we only give five minutes at the beginning, maybe 30 seconds is enough for, for, you know.
But he can still put the sign up, that was, that was a weird thing. But things that are offensive, I guess that goes back to that whole thing about the Rotary sign.
Legislates.
And that's why I worry about with your, I would like to say that, I'd like to say, we don't tolerate this. And we don't, but, but as soon as you're making the judgment of what is acceptable speech and what's not, I think that that's, you know, something that we need to consider.
I, I didn't say that I, what's acceptable or not, I said what I believe, which is that it is not accepted here or welcomed. It's accepted, but it's not welcomed.
You know, Ryan, I share your sentiments completely. I, I just, I guess what I'm wondering is, is it, are you the one that should be posting this? You're our, you're the town administrator. You know, you are expressing your personal opinions, but, but you're, you're doing it as a, as our town administrator. And is that an appropriate role? Rather than if, if we wanted to make a statement about, you know, how, how we would like people to be treated in Carlisle and what we believe in, shouldn't it be coming from the select board? Something that we're going to post on our website? Again, I, I, you know, I share your, your feelings, but is, is that the appropriate role? Are you the appropriate person to be putting that statement out rather than something like that from the select board?
It's for us to decide.
Yeah, I know, sorry, I know.
On the other hand, you know, he, also, we shouldn't be limiting Ryan's free speech either.
I'm not.
Again, the open meeting law does not require that a public body allow public comment or public participation during its meetings. The open meeting law states that no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair. And all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent.
So Cynthia, that's true as long as you don't have public comment.
That's the key thing, we've, we've set it up.
We debated about that last year and we decided it was better to have more public comment.
This is the, right, this is the first time we've had a bad experience, right? So if it doesn't occur again, then it should be okay. If it does occur, one way is to park it back at the end and force people to stick through endless discussions about Carlisle minutiae in order to make a.
Can we make it Carlisle community input?
No.
No.
Similar to our flag discussion.
Yeah, well, and we decided not to allow anything on the flagpole, didn't we? So maybe it's time to say to our community, well, I hate to punish the entire, our community for some bad actors. I, I think we should, but I've always also wanted to encourage people to write to us, because I think that's a, a good way of giving us input.
Yeah.
Although it avoids all of this and we save ourselves some time on our meetings.
I think we get our removed, I actually would advocate that we need more public opinion, because there are a lot of the things that we're discussing, and I was mentioning one tonight, that I felt a little differently than other members on the board, that I wish we got a lot more public opinion on before we, you know, move forward with. I'd like to hear from organizations, people, whatever, and I don't want to shut that down.
Okay.
Let's see what happens, let's see what happens.
Yeah, this, no, this is possibly very, you know, like our other free speech audit, First Amendment audit that we had, it was a one-off so far. We haven't had another one.
But I think we should go back to the question I raised about your comment, your, what you'd like to post, Ryan.
I, I would be comfortable with him posting it as long as it's okay with counsel. We just don't want to, it seems fine to me, but I don't, I'm not an attorney, just to make sure we're not causing any problems, but. That's, that's just, that's. It came from the heart, really.
Absolutely.
I hope we get sued over it, that's me.
Yeah, so that's why you should talk.
Say it again, Ryan.
I said, I hope we get sued over being unwelcoming of hateful comments.
Right.
Be happy to pay the $1,000 deductible.
Well.
And we have a $100,000 deductible unless.
I just, I do want to point out that this is recorded and very likely could be being watched later.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with, if we, you know, just run it by counsel. And I guess the other thing to say would just be to say, make it clear that it's your, your.
I thought it was clear that it was his.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, I, I don't remember exactly all that he said, so I just, again, I completely support the sentiments.
The question is whether we want the town administrator to put his own sentiments on the website?
Yeah, and I, I, let's just ask him.
I think the question is whether or not we want to add something also to it, that's really a question for me.
I think that's a more germane question.
I think he should be able to post what he wants to.
I agree.
In this case.
I'm fine with it.
I, I prefer to, I, I hate to say that, think about these things before I just do them. Unless there's some crisis that requires it, and you could argue that this is a crisis and we need to do it right away to get the message out. But, you know, to see it in writing rather than just hear it once, I think would be valuable to me before, you know, something gets posted that, you know, just, and that's why I always think you should have counsel review it or something, you should have some other person. It's like sleeping on a big decision before you make it is a smart policy.
I agree with that, makes sense.
Unless it's a crisis that, you know, you've, the building's on fire, you got to leave, but.
I, I would agree with that, I think sitting on it for, you know, 24 hours.
We won't.
Checking in with counsel, having counsel look at it and.
So we're, we're saying, we're saying it's okay pending counsel review, or whatever. I mean, we're not going to meet again for at least a week.
We could do a quick check-in call, though. I guess we'd have to post it.
We have to post that.
Yeah, second.
I think we should, yeah, I, I agree with Travis, but I just want to leave Ryan with some path forward, right? Because we, it's not easy for us to re-meet, we should just, is it just thinking about it and have counsel review, or do you want more?
Actually, what would happen if we did not adjourn the meeting tonight and just pause it until tomorrow morning?
I'm shaking his head, is there a reason to?
What's that, this, this, this topic isn't even a topic on the agenda.
Yeah, you can't just adjourn.
Okay, well, I just hadn't thought about that. I was trying to solve the other problem.
You know, although we do say on our agenda that we list the things that we reasonably expect to be, to come up, but we can't, I've forgotten what that language is.
No, I think that we, fine, I think it's fine that we're talking about this because it came up in this meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that, you know, just now postponing the conclusion of the meeting till tomorrow is kind of.
Well, the other way would be to, to, for us to draft a statement from the board, it's our meeting. And then you do it the way we do it without circular deliberation, right? We send, somebody sends a draft, we send our edits back, and that becomes the thing we post, and that comes from the select board.
You, you're saying we wouldn't have to get together again to look.
Well, when we do drafts like that, we don't do it, we do it so we don't violate it, so we don't deliberate.
No, I know, we send the.
So we could start with his draft or some version and we could edit and, or, I mean, if we, if we decide, if we think it's appropriate for the select board to make a statement, which it is our meeting, right, so.
Or in addition to.
The only reason I brought up the, I think, for me, I'd be, if Ryan wants to do this, I. The only reason I brought up, I think, for me, I'd be, if Ryan wants to do this, I I'm fine with it, subject to legal council review, because I just don't want to have something out there that is is.
I think we agree, we all agree that that should be a wicked, that he can pursue without us reconvening.
Yeah.
And thinking about it, he may decide to edit it somewhat in the morning. Do we, as a board, do we also feel the need to say anything or? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with that, too.
It's not that I don't feel the same way, it's just I'm not sure that it would be productive.
I agree with you. I agree with you. Okay.
So are we clear on how we're going forward?
We're gonna, so it's all yours.
And you'll pending, run it by council and then just let us know the outcome?
We'll know the outcome, it's on the website.
Well. He should inform us, send us a copy of what's gonna be posted.
Yep.
So we know it's coming.
Yeah, it was certainly interesting experience.
It was very unsettling.
It was unsettling, yeah, I mean, I felt.
It is the purpose of it to what, to just back people off? Or what what is the, what is the message that we're trying to send? I I understand, my take on it was you would want to send the message that, you know, we we didn't shut people down because we didn't violate the law, we didn't say, we don't like your opinion and we closed you off, we didn't like the timing, they they didn't adhere to the standards of our meeting of the timetable, you know, of one minute or whatever, and and they were disruptive and we shut them down. I mean, that's, those are facts of what we did, that I think are relevant, but when you add in, you know, our opinion on them, that's where I was questioning whether we should be adding that in, even though I do share that opinion. I just don't know what, as a town, we have the, you know, because we're not adjudicating opinions, we're not trying to say, but but maybe we want to, maybe.
Well, I I think I would go back to if it's a, don't fix things that aren't a problem, right, I mean, it's a one one-off.
Right.
And hopefully it's a one-off, right, so if it was, if we were, I mean, I think about this sometimes, if if I, because of having been on school committee and that's gotten a lot of press nationally. If I was on school committee in one of these really contentious places where they're standing up and they're attacking you personally and they're threatening you, I mean, what would I do, like? If that, if we were in that kind of climate, I think, first of all, that would be very disappointing, but also I think we would take steps to just not have public input. We would just determine that it's not productive.
It's not productive.
And let's just do our business, right, and so we can always do that to Cynthia's point, we just have to apply it.
Even.
Even, so it's not a problem yet, it was a disappointing and upsetting experience and fortunately we don't have it.
Wasn't residence. Also, it was not our town residence.
Well, that would be even more disturbing, I'm absolutely glad it was not residence.
Well.
Right, I mean.
Well, we don't know that the one town wasn't.
I presume since she didn't
I'd give.
Dang to give us her street address, I guess that, she listened to the first guy and said, oh, a Carlisle resident, and then Wood Street and radio silence, so.
Yeah, well, and I gave her ample opportunity.
Yeah, right, State Street, such a great street.
This this may be.
It's a good guess, right?
All right, are we?
Can we adjourn?
I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'm really adjourned.
Second.
Any objections?
I I think we may have at least fifteen more minutes worth of.
Think to vote, please.
Yeah.
Arnold, aye.
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 Aye, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, bye.
Good night, everyone.